Good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the June 6, 2023 Meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Tarpe if she would come forward and give us an invocation, please.
Father, we just thank you for your love, your covering, and your protection, Lord. We welcome your presence in this room, Lord. God, we thank you for every commissioner in this room, every leader, Father. Would you lead and guide this meeting, Father? Your kingdom come, your will be done in this meeting as it is in heaven. Father, we're asking, God, that you would protect the commissioners, the leaders, the individuals, the families in this county from evil, Lord. Father, we just welcome your plan and your agenda for this meeting, Lord. We're asking, Lord God, that you would keep our hearts open, Father, to your heart for this counting, for your heart for this nation, in Jesus' mighty name.
Amen.
Well, thank you, Pastor Tarpe. We appreciate it. And you come to us from Revive Church here in Prince Frederick. So, thank you very much for joining us today. At this time, I'll ask if we can approve the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented?
I've done. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, that we approve the agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I do have a couple of public service announcements today. Last week, we dedicated part of 765 H.D. Truman Road in Lusby to Sheriff Oscar William Billy Lusby. He was sheriff a long time ago, and those of us back when we probably had, what, two deputies? And the deputies' cars didn't even have the lights on them. My uncle was one of the deputies. They didn't even have lights or anything on the cars. They just rode around in cars. And it was, it was a different time, for sure, but I want to take that opportunity to recognize Sheriff Lusby for his service to the citizens of Calver County.
We did get to see some of your original deputies.
And, Mr. President, we did, we were enlightened to some information that they used to use their own cars at times.
Right.
How small were we then?
We were small. Probably thirteen thousand people, maybe. And different people, so it's a different day, so. And today also marks the anniversary of D-Day invasion, June 6, 1944. I think that as time goes on, we are not as reminiscent as we used to be of the significance and the ramifications of that event that occurred that day, where four thousand of our troops lost their lives in one single event. And, you know, as you reflect on that, you need to think about, most of those individuals that stormed that beach that day were under twenty years old. And as I get older and I think back, you know, when I'm nineteen, I thought I could tackle the whole world. But now, as I'm older and I think back, a nineteen-year-old young man got off an amphibious unit and what he faced, and his leader's telling him, "Go forward." And depending on when he reached that beach, that water was no longer blue, it was red. And he's told to march forward. And he did. And it made a difference in that war, it made a difference in this world as we see it today. And we should never forget the sacrifice that happened that day by all those young men, never. So, everybody should take a moment today and think about those individuals and their families that were left behind. But as I say, we get farther and farther away from that event. People don't have forgotten, I think, the significance and the impact that occurred that day and what those young men did for us. So, I think that concludes my public service announcements today, and that brings us to proclamations. The first one is Commissioner Brasso. And it's to celebrate the seventieth anniversary of Bethel Way of the Cross Church. Oh, yes. Bishop, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so very much. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity today to just receive this great recognition. We've been here for seventy years in this county, serving the people here in Calver County. Hopefully, we have done a great job of changing lives of people to be able to support this county and make it better. And so, the years to come, we're going to still be here to do whatever we can to be a blessing to this particular county. We're going to try to do the best that we possibly can so individual will not have to stand before the judges. For individual will not have give trouble to the police officers. So, if we can change their hearts and change their minds, we can change their attitudes. So, this is our job. God bless you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, your church is a blessing to the community. I've been to your church. It's beautiful. And I've read your history, and it's a long, strong history. Okay, whereas Bethel Way of the Cross Church of Christ, Inc., is celebrating its seventieth anniversary, this distinctive milestone and outstanding devotion of service to God and mankind is cause for joyous celebration. And whereas established on February 11, 1953, Elder John Jacob Astor Green began his pastoral leadership with a small group of worshippers in a community hall. They relocated to a new, permanent edifice where individuals and families participated in prayer meetings and other services and began to grow into a congregation. Elder Green was bestowed the title of bishop in 1970. He, along with the Saints of Bethel, set their sights upon erecting another new edifice to accommodate their growing congregation and ministry needs. After demolishing their former building, they broke ground for a new building in 1978. In September, 1979, the Lord blessed Bethel to dedicate and occupy that facility, now the old church facing Cherry Hill Road. God's blessings upon Bethel continued as they paid the mortgage to that facility within ten years. Growth and prosperity became evident under Bishop Green's leadership as the ministry spanned at least four generations. Bishop Green appointed Elder Alan H. Easton as the assistant pastor in 1994, and then as co-pastor in 1995. In February, 1998, Bishop Green retired and appointed Elder Alan Easton as pastor. And whereas upon Bishop Alan Easton's passing in 2002, Bishop Darnell L. Easton was appointed and installed in 2003 and is still the pastor today. Continuing his predecessor's plans, Bishop Darnell Easton led Bethel to build the new house of worship, which is the current church facing Route 4. The groundbreaking ceremony for the current church was held on November 8, 2015, followed by a grand opening celebration on November 18, 2017. The first service in the new edifice was held on April 1, 2018. Bethel has now grown to become one of the largest churches in Calver County. With God's help and Bishop Easton as pastor, Bethel will continue to minister to the needs of the church and community, evangelize the lost, establish believers through discipleship ministries and involvement, establish a place of worship for all people to advance the kingdom of God, and provide an opportunity for spiritual growth and enrichment among our young people and the family unit. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County wishes to join with Bethel Way of the Cross Church of Christ congregation and all faith-based communities in celebrating the seventieth anniversary of this sacred and spiritual institution. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that appreciation and gratitude is hereby extended to Bethel Way of the Cross Church of Christ, Inc., on their seventieth anniversary of dedicated and invaluable service to God's ministry. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation is presented as a tribute to the strength and stability of Bethel Way of the Cross Church of Christ's mission, thereby recognizing this extraordinary devotion to improving the quality of life for all citizens of Calver County, given under our hands and sealed this sixth day of June, 2023, and that's signed by all five county commissioners. Thank you. Does the rest of the congregation want to come up for pictures?
Yep, I said, "Come on up." Yeah, I said, "Come on straight up." Thank you so much. Perfect.
You look like you photobombed it there, Commissioner Brasso.
Yeah, I said, "You know what we can do?" Yeah, yeah, we can put some right here in the back if you just watch your step. Yeah, you have to watch your step going up here, and we'll go right to the back, Commissioner Har.
Be real careful. There's that step.
Here we go.
Step, catch, step.
Picture down here.
You gotta watch that step.
Picture down just a little bit. There we go. Great.
There we go. Okay. Awesome. Let's everybody find the lens, push your hands. See back there. Here we go.
Smile.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Congratulations.
Wonderful.
Don't tie it. Oh, don't tie it. All right, everybody stay. Stay. Commissioner Har. Don't leave yet.
Yes.
We have one more.
Here we go.
So, we have another proclamation. This one is for you, Bishop, and you know, you said it before, you, you know, in today's world, there are so many distractions. You know, when I was little, you know, the neighborhood would raise you if some mom or dad wasn't around, you know, they'd say, "What are you doing?" Hit you behind the head and say, you know, "Hey, that's the way to go," you know, and we've lost our compass a lot of times. We really have. And the church is almost really all we got left that makes any sense, you know. People look at here, and I'm like, "It's government. It don't make sense." It doesn't, you know, because it's, it's at the will of what's popular. But the Bible's been the same. And that is the consistent barometer, and to have folks to still go out there and say, "I know what you saw over there, and I know what you saw over there, but you know what's right and what's wrong, and you said a mouthful," and you know, and it starts right there, and it starts at home. And, and so, thank you very, very much for what you and the church and everybody in the congregation continue to do, because that work's never done. You know, so with all that, I want to read this for you, and it says, "Whereas Bishop Darnell Easton celebrates his twentieth anniversary as a minister of the gospel and service to the congregation of Bethel Way of the Cross Church of Christ, Inc., located in Honeytown, Maryland. And whereas Bishop Easton answered the call to ministry in April, 1975," I think I was eight, seven?
Careful, Commissioner Har.
Been doing it a while. "...and was ordained by the late Bishop John Jacob A. Green in June, 1977. He has, he has since served loyally, faithfully, and with integrity in his calling. In July, 2000, he was consecrated to the office of First Assistant Pastor, and in June, 2003, he became pastor of Bethel Way of the Cross Church of Christ, where he has undertaken the charge of God by activating the vision of reaping the harvest and expanding the church-building, community relations, outreach, all while meeting the demands and challenging responsibilities of his church family. And whereas Bishop Easton has become a respected and beloved figure in the community, creating numerous outreach programs that have helped feed, clothe, and shelter countless families in Calver County. Whereas Bishop Easton is anointed, effective, and inspiring man of God, who gives life to one of his favorite scriptures, St. Luke 4:18, 9, which says, "The Spirit of the Lord is upon me, because he hath anointed me to preach the gospel to the poor. He hath sent me to heal the brokenhearted, to preach deliverance to the captives and recovering the sight of the blind, to set at liberty them that are bruised, to preach the acceptable year of the Lord." Nice passage. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Calver County Board of County Commissioners, recognizes and shares in our appreciation and gratitude for Bishop Darnell Easton on his twentieth anniversary as pastor of Bethel Way of the Cross Church of Christ. And be it further proclaimed that his outstanding leadership, selfless service, tireless efforts in promoting the welfare of the people he serves are worthy of this commendation given under our hands this sixth day of June, 23, signed by all five commissioners.
And, one, two, three, one more. One, two, three. Awesome.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Yes. Thank you so much. Yes, thank you. This is wonderful.
Please. You're good. You're good.
Yeah, this was perfect.
Yes, sir. You too. Thank you for joining us.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Yes, thank you. Watch your step.
Thank you. Watch that, watch that step.
Yes. Thank you so very much, though. Any more announcements you can make?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
So, that brings us to our next proclamation. Commissioner Cox, for recognition of Pride Month.
I think we have here Tammy Gladstone, if she's here today. Come on forward, then. State your name and what organization you're with.
Good morning, everyone. I wanted to just take a minute. Good morning, yes. Good morning, everybody. Congratulations on the recent proclamation just issued to you all. That's quite an achievement. Quite an achievement, sir. Okay, um, it's good morning. Thank you. I just want to thank the Commissioners first for having us today to recognize Pride Month, which is June, the month of June. Though I will say, we have Pride every month of the year. It just happens to be celebrated in June. Our event happens to happen in October. COVID did that to us and made us move it when things were not open, and the weather is quite a bit nicer in the month of October. So, I wanted to thank Commissioners, because this will be our sixth annual event. The last, the first four happened in this county, actually, so I appreciate your all's support in that, at the Maroon Museum. We quickly outgrew that space, and so, we have now located another space in St. Mary's County to hold our event. Our first event that occurred in 2017, there was approximately fifty people at that event. Last year, St. Mary's County Parks and Rec estimated we could have had as many as twelve hundred at last year's event. So, there's definitely a need in the tri-county area of Southern Maryland to support the LGBTQIA community in our, in our community. And I appreciate your all's recognition of this very special month. I do have invitations for all of you. It is a tri-county event, so it does cover all three counties. Charles had their first Pride, by the way. I don't know if any of you all made it up there. Three weeks ago, the Saturday before Memorial Day. I've heard some talk of people wanting to have one in Calver County as well, since we have moved ours to St. Mary's County. So, thank you very much for your time, and I'll leave some of these here for you all.
Come on up and... You can make your way up here, ma'am.
All right. I'm Paul Quaid. I am the president of PFLAG Southern Maryland, which is a tri-county organization dedicated to LGBTQ+ families. We educate, support, and advocate on behalf of those families. I'm here to thank the Calver County Public School System for inviting us to the mental health fair to speak, to all the amazing teachers that have reached out to invite us to speak to their GSA, their Gay Straight Alliance, or Gender Sexuality Alliance groups. We want to thank the Mission Center and the local library system for giving us a safe space to have our support groups in Prince Frederick and Solomons, so that we can meet. We also want to thank the Rec and Parks Department for letting us use their community center for our social events and holiday parties every year. We thank the library system for hosting LGBTQ+ events, like the comic book documentary last year, and for providing a diverse book selection. It's important for students and members of the community to have windows and mirrors in our books in our libraries. That means they can see themselves, but they can also see other people that are not like them. I also want to thank the local health department for their efforts in HIV prevention, reproductive health, and mental health, all of which are very important to the LGBTQ+ community. I want to thank other organizations like the Calver Rainbow Alliance, who's here, and Pride S.O.M.D. And I want to thank our faith communities, including All Saints Parish, the Unitarian Universalists, and several Episcopal churches that provide supported faith communities. However, families have some concerns. They do not feel safe. They do not feel welcome. In fact, students and parents declined to come with us today because last year, they felt the proclamation was not upheld. They're worried that the words and actions of local governments and party leaders are promoting hate speech and violence towards the LGBTQ+ community. They're against these book banning efforts and censorship, acknowledging the amazing families, students, teachers, and librarians that spoke out at the board meeting also. We're asking you all to emphasize that we need more, we need less performative politics and more action. Allyship is a verb, not a noun. We need leadership that's actively working to uphold the promises of this proclamation. It states, "Calver County strives to be a community where everyone is celebrated for their differences, rather than being limited by what might divide us." We need to be more vocal in our support of the community and the government organizations seeking to make Calver County a safe, welcoming place. It's necessary for us to identify the privileges provided to us as individuals and leaders, and how we can use those privileges to advance equality and freedom, especially for transgender people and communities of color, who we know are targeted more, especially in Southern Maryland. Everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice." This is from the proclamation. "Fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, and hatred, to be supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders." They're not. "Denounce the hateful words of local government and party leaders. Speak out against the book banning and censorship efforts by the Board of Ed. The direct support of some of our leadership of these anti-LGBTQ efforts contradict this proclamation, and it does not make residents feel safe or welcome." I am very pleased to announce that in September, PFLAG will be hosting a tri-county youth summit, where we will be teaching school, high school-age and middle school-age students how to start a school-based organization, advocate for change, and, most importantly, understand their rights as students and citizens in our school district and our county. I also want to ask everyone to join us on June 15 at the Calver Board of Ed meeting with members of the greater community as we speak against those censorship efforts and show support for all families. Please take time to visit pflagSOMD.org or follow us at PFLAG S.O.M.D. to learn more about our organization and the events we have planned for Pride Month. I also encourage any other residents with feedback, positive and negative, to email COMMISs@calvercountymd.gov. I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Happy Pride, and as a means of peaceful protest, we are all respectfully declining a photograph today. And we invite the board members, if they'd like a photograph, to attend a PFLAG or Pride meeting or reach out to schedule an appointment with us. So, thank you all.
Anybody else?
Hi. I hadn't actually planned to speak today, but I think... Oh, I'm Jane Wynne, W-Y-N-N. So, I am a business owner. I am a proud parent of four kids in Calver County. And my kids attend your schools, our schools. And five days past my daughter's fifth birthday, she came to me and said, "Mommy, I'm a girl. I don't want to cut my hair, and I want to pierce my ears." I don't want to cut my hair and I want to pierce my ears. As a cis heterosexual woman, I was shocked. I am not part of the LGBTQ community, well, now I am, but I wasn't at that point. And by saying I am mean, I'm the proud parent of a person and so our family is part of the LGBTQ community. I'm so grateful that God saw it in me to say, okay, you can't pierce your ears, but we are going to cut, we won't cut your hair anymore, instead of saying, no, that's not true, it's not okay. I took a breath, I prayed, and then I started doing research and it was a very slow journey. She wants to be called a girl at home, a sister at home, that's fine, and it was about a year before she was comfortable sharing with anyone outside of our four walls. My beautiful daughter is 12 and a half and not for one minute has she ever wavered from who her identity is. She doesn't understand, she doesn't get it, she doesn't understand why people hate her. We try to shield her from the news as much as possible. She has no social media. My oldest goes to Huntington High School and in his health class last year, there was a cahoot put up on the board and it was transphobic. He took a picture of it, sent it to me. After that, the classroom started chanting that there are only two genders. I know that there are other children in that classroom who were impacted by that, whether they be those children who identify other than in the binary or children who are siblings of people who may be other than in the binary. I know that this panel has some very strong opinions about people who allow their children to be who they are. I'm sure you have a lot of questions and feelings about my choice as a parent to allow my child to be who she is. I'm going to tell you, this is a journey that no one would ever willingly or knowingly walk into. I think my husband put it best, when it first happened, he said, we're throwing her to the wolves. And I have to tell you, I know and I agree, but she is so steadfastly her. And I'm not talking about medications and I'm not talking about surgeries, which is totally preposterous that someone would say that we would do that to a child. But what I'm saying is that I believe in leaning into love, I believe in, in listening to people when they tell me who they are. She's a human being with a heart that's just beautiful, with tons of friends. She goes and plays on the beaches, she eats crabs, she draws, and she knows what's happening in the world. And so my biggest challenge as a parent is to just keep her from falling into the depths of despair because she is told by society that she is not okay, that she is not worthy of human rights, of the ability to go to the bathroom, of the ability to read a book that reflects who she is. She is not worthy of medical decisions, she is not worthy of psychological services because that is considered part of gender-affirming care. We have a society that is erasing my daughter. I appreciate that you're doing this proclamation today and I appreciate even more that you're willing to sit here and listen to me and I hope that when you are crafting policies, you remember my face, because I am a human being who has four kids, one who happens to identify as transgender. And she is worthy of safety and love and kindness, just like your children and grandchildren and you are. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Yes, I'm going to read the proclamation now and it goes, "Whereas everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, and hatred based on race, ethnicity, religion, class, mental or physical disability, gender identity, sexual orientation, of age, and to be supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas the LGBTQIA+ community has made significant contributions in both our community and around the world. And whereas the historically riot of Stonewall in New York City on January 28, 1969 is considered an important event in LGBTQIA+ history in the United States. And whereas June has been celebrated as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month nationwide in honor of citizens that rose up in fault discriminatory laws at Stonewall, as well as celebrate all members of the LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas Calvert County strives to be a community where everyone is celebrated for their differences, rather than being limited by what they might divide us. Now, therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County the month of June 2023 be known as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that we commend that many ways LGBTQIA+ Americans have contributed to the history, culture, and social fabric of the nation and Calvert County. Given our hands and seals this sixth day of June 2023, signed by all five commissioners." Thank you for coming up.
That brings us to our next proclamation. Commissioner Arland, Safety Month.
Dan Baker, would you please come forward and introduce yourself and give us a little talk about what you do for the county, sir?
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Dan Baker, Safety Officer, Calvert County Government, under Risk Management, under Human Resources. I am very proud of Calvert County. Over the past six years, seven years, that I've been the Safety Officer, the safety culture has really rose in the county, from upper management to department heads, division chiefs, down to supervisors, to each individual employee. When I meet with the employees, I'm telling all of them, you're all Safety Officers. You're Safety Officer for yourself and everybody around you, the public, staff at all of our facilities, and it has really come up. I mean, they've made strides. Now we have, we have a Safety Committee with a person from every division on it. We have a Safety Review Committee, which we go over incidents and accidents. We also have our Safety Day with Parks and Rec that they put on once a year now, where we go over the risk management and safety manual and then they go out with their staff on loading equipment on trailers, how to operate equipment, moving things around, so everybody's doing it right in a safe manner. So I'm very proud and this is National Safety Month, so that's why we're stressing it on June.
And you teach a lot of classes?
I do. We have, we teach first aid CPR and AED to all the county employees free of charge and we've got over 600 employees we have trained. We also do OSHA training, also from, everything from confined space to OSHA 10. We also have excavation training for our people at Highway and steady going on. Now we're building our own safety division, training division for our career EMS, where we have certified instructors from University of Maryland Fire and Rescue Institute, which will be teaching a lot of them, all of our EVOC training and things like that we're working on.
Thank you for doing what you do. Do you have anybody with you today?
Yes, I have our risk management staff, Ellen Simpson, Michelle Langham.
If you want to introduce yourselves and come on forward.
Sure.
Ellen Simpson, your risk manager.
Michelle Langham, the risk management specialist.
Jamie Angus, Risk Management Assistant.
And I'm Karen Malinas, Division Chief for Natural Resources and Parks and Recreation on behalf of Ian Keely.
Okay, we have a proclamation. It reads, "Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County desires to recognize the benefits of fostering a strong safety culture for all Calvert County employees and citizens. And whereas safety is everyone's responsibility, Calvert County's greatest assets are its employees and its citizens. And whereas each year more than 4 million workers suffer job-related injuries or illnesses and over 4,000 Americans die in work-related incidents. This affects not only the injured workers and their families, but also businesses and local economy. And whereas the Calvert County Government's risk management and safety program works to assure the safety of all county employees by setting and enforcing standards, providing training, and encouraging continual improvement in workplace safety and health. By participating in Safety Month, they will enhance their commitment to a safe and healthy workplace. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Calvert County Commissioners of Calvert County that the month of June 2023 be known as Safety Month in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that we encourage all employees and citizens to recognize the value of safety in the workplace and at home. Given under our hands and seal this sixth day of June 2023, signed by all five county commissioners. Thank you all."
Karen, can you come forward, please?
Now.
Now I can come forward.
This is for the great outdoors, if you would go ahead and introduce yourself and give a little brief speech here for us.
Sure, my name is Karen Malinas, I'm the Division Chief for Natural Resources for Parks and Recreation and June is Great Outdoors Month, where we celebrate the opportunities to be outdoors, enjoy nature, and experience the health and wellness benefits of having natural areas. And as the Division Chief for Natural Resources, me and my staff, I have some with me, we oversee 1,500 acres of meadows, forests, rivers, ponds, beaches for people to explore within Parks and Recreation. We also have additional fields for athletics, trails, and beaches as well. So it's really an opportunity to just promote the wonderful resources that we have in this county and to encourage everybody to take time this month to explore and learn about those areas and then continue that throughout the year.
Thank you. If the remainder of staff would come forward, introduce yourselves and Karen, do you want to come on up?
Good morning, I'm Jenny Yoder, I'm the Park Manager at Kings Landing Park up in Huntington.
My name is August Rell, I'm a grounds maintenance worker.
And I'm Brian Buzzard, Park Manager, Flag Ponds Nature Park.
Thank you all, and as she said, oh, I'm sorry.
Shannon Nizal, Director of Parks and Recreation, just, just real quick.
What park do you work at, man?
All of them, all of them, every single one. But you mentioned, you know, all of our staff come forward, well, we only have a couple here and thank you for, for coming this morning, but most of our staff are out working on programs with chest packs and making sure that our, that our facilities are up, kept, and ready for our, our community to, to be there. So we have a lot larger of a staff, but this is who we could, we could pull away this morning, so. But everybody, just as Karen mentioned earlier, it is the start of summer and it's a great time to get outdoors, the weather hasn't gotten too crazy yet, so take time out of your day, take, you know, a couple hours, go explore a park that you haven't been to before. We have some great facilities, Ward Farm is one of our newest, there are some great things to do there. We have our beaches at Flag Ponds in Breezy Point, as well as, you know, Karen mentioned, our other nature parks as well, so lots of great things to explore, so.
Well, thank you, and as she said, there's a lot of opportunities out there. Of course, if you go early in the morning this time of year, you may have to start with a hoodie, but by about 9:30, 10 o'clock, you can probably be in a short-sleeved shirt. So I'm going to read the proclamation. "Whereas the Calvert County Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of the great outdoors in enhancing the quality of life for our residents and strives to preserve our natural resources for the enjoyment of present and future generations. And whereas, since 2019, the month of June has been nationally designated as Great Outdoors Month, promoting healthy and active lifestyles through outdoor activities and fostering a deep appreciation for our annuals, I'm sorry, natural surroundings. The Calvert County Department of Parks and Recreation acknowledges the importance, importance of environmental stewardship, recognizes that connecting people with nature is crucial for fostering a sense of responsibility and appreciation for our natural environment, and seeks to inspire individuals and families to explore and engage in outdoor recreation. And whereas, our county is blessed with a diverse range of parks, trails, and recreational facilities that offer opportunities for hiking, biking, camping, fishing, boating, wildlife observation, and many other outdoor activities. Spending time in nature has been proven to have numerous physical, mental, and emotional health benefits, including reducing stress, improving mood, increasing physical fitness, and promoting overall well-being. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the month of June 2023 be known as Great Outdoors Month in Calvert County and urge all residents to take advantage of this opportunity to explore the beauty and wonders of our outdoor spaces. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners encourages individuals, families, schools, community organizations, and businesses to engage in healthy recreational activities, connect with nature, celebrate our natural heritage, and create lasting memories in our county's parks, trails, and recreational areas. Given under our hands and seal this sixth day of June 2023."
Melanie Woodson.
Director Woodson. She's busy chatting.
Good morning, commissioners, I'm Melanie Woodson, Human Resources Director, and as you know, the Risk Management and Safety Division falls under my umbrella. I am not here to present the award, my staff is going to do that today, so I will let them take the mic and we can go ahead and get started. Thank you.
Good morning again, commissioners. Dan Baker, Safety Officer with Risk Management under Human Resources. We have a Safety Champion Award we give out every year and we do it the month of June because of being Safety Month. This award, we get submittals from everybody in all the departments, Sheriff's Office, Detention Center, every entity part of Calvert County Government. On our Safety Committee, we have our Safety Committee, we have representative from each group. This goes out for nominations. We had three nominees. They were voted on by the Safety Committee, and the winner this year goes to Ian Keely, which is Parks and Rec for Natural Resources. He's a supervisor, Park Supervisor. He takes care of 11 parks that we have, 11 entities part of Natural Resources, over 1,500 acres. He takes care of opening trails, from cutting grass, cutting trees, plowing snow if it ever snows again. He also teaches staff, safety with operating chainsaws, operating gators, also volunteers that come into the park. He does an outstanding job. Division Chief Karen Malinas nominated him for it, and looking at all the stuff that he does, and I've known him since he was born, very, very outstanding individual, and I'm proud to be having him as staff. And also, on the Parks and Rec side as well, when Sharon Nizall came up here from her past experience, she bought a large Risk Management and Safety Manual with her from down there, which has really helped us out a lot. A lot of things that we were missing in different programs that we put into play. So it does start at the top and go down as well. So, but yeah, we'd like to bring Karen Malinas up to receive the award for Ian. He couldn't make it today.
Yeah, so again, Karen Malinas from Natural Resources. And I'm very so glad that Ian was accepted for this award. He is really a one-man maintenance staff with August as his assistant. So when you think about all the activities that have to go from a safety perspective, Ian really is spearheads a lot of what we have to do. So I'm really honored to be able to present, accept this on behalf of Ian Keely, our Park Supervisor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Shannon Nizall, Director of Parks and Recreation. And I know Ian couldn't be here today, but I just wanted to publicly thank him for his dedication to Parks and Recreation and Natural Resources and the work that he does on a daily basis. It, it does seem like a lot when you're looking at, and it is a lot, of what he's responsible for when it comes to all of our natural resource facilities, that he oversees the maintenance for all of those facilities. It's, it's a big job. He is fairly new in the position, and he has taken it upon himself to really make that his position and really excel in making sure that all of our staff and our volunteers are doing, doing work safely, and that our patrons have facilities that are safe for, for their use as well. So just a public thank you to Ian, to his great work, and for Karen's leadership in nominating him.
And you're going to Photoshop Ian right here, right?
Put it right, just the spot right there.
Can't do that, yeah. Here we go. And one, two, three. One, two. Let's take a photo of him. And we're good.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Bye. Yep, these are the next.
Next, that brings us to the Employee Recognition Committee Scholarship Award Winners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ashley Brown, and I'm an Office Specialist 2 with the Calvert Soil Conservation District. But today, I am here as Chair of the Employee Recognition Committee to introduce and congratulate the winners of the 2023 Employee Recognition Committee Scholarship Contest. I'd like to thank both of our scholars and your families for taking time to be here today. Some background on the scholarship. The ERC offers two scholarship categories and three awards annually to graduating high school seniors who are bound for college. The first category is for graduating high school seniors whose parent or guardian works for Calver County Government. In this category, there are two prizes, $1,500 for first place and $750 for second place. The second category is for graduating high school seniors who are themselves a Calver County Government employee. This category offers one prize in the amount of $750. Funds for the ERC scholarships are raised year-round from vending machine sales located around Calver County on Calver County Government property. Next time you are craving a snack, remember your contributions are supporting the next generation of scholars. In March, a notice announcing the scholarship opportunity was emailed to all county employees. As applications were received, two members of the ERC redacted all identifying information from the applications to allow for seamless and unbiased scoring. At the close of the application period, a five-member committee comprised of three ERC members and two additional non-ERC members then independently reviewed and scored the applications based on a predetermined point system. I extend a personal thank you to those ERC members and non-members of the scholarship committee for volunteering their time in support of our youth. The applications are evaluated on many facets, including academic achievement, extracurricular activities both in and out of school, community service involvement, honors and awards, letters of recommendation, and a short essay. This year's application, applicants were asked to write about what success means to them. This year, we received two applications, both in the category of graduating high school senior whose parent or guardian works for Calver County Government. Finally, it is my pleasure and privilege to introduce the winners of the 2023 Employee Recognition Committee Scholarship. In first place, and the winner of the $1,500 grand prize is Deputy Lieutenant of Gene Mugly at the Department of Community Resources Office on Aging, Logan Mugly. Logan, any friends? Logan is graduating Calver High School.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, with an outstanding 4.09 GPA. We have learned from his application that Logan is an incredible scholar, taking on multiple AP classes in engineering all at once. Both of his letters of recommendation agreed that he is naturally curious and will ask questions on anything he might not understand. In addition to his go-getter personality, Logan has allowed time in his high school career for sports, community involvement, and has already ventured into the working world by interning 160 hours at the Patuxent Naval Air Warfare Center Aircraft Division. There, he learned basic circuitry, how to program Arduino microcontrollers, and how to use SolidWorks modeling software. He then applied these skills to assist with multiple experimentations. Logan played baseball for both Calver High School and Parks and Recreation. He was also involved with chorus and theater in high school. Further, he volunteered his time to assist Christmas in April and at Indigenous Peoples' Day at Jefferson Patterson Park and Museum. He is, he has indeed a bright future ahead of him. His intelligence and hard work will open many doors for him, the first of which being accepted to West Virginia University to study engineering. Gene, you must be very proud of Logan, and there is no stopping him with your support every step of the way. Congratulations, Logan, and we wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. Logan is invited now to read his winning scholarship essay this morning on how you define success.
Hello, I'm Logan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My definition of success has not always been constant. As a kid, I believed that success was only attainable if you became extremely rich and famous. Later on, I focused it more towards just wealth and being able to buy things. Now I think of success much differently. I see success more now as distance traveled or mastery of a skill. I want to master my career and be a respectful and intelligent person that people can come to with questions. I'm not looking to answer every question, but I would like to be able to have a meaningful input on it. I want to be knowledgeable and skillful enough that I can contribute to any project or idea that may come my way. Measuring success is incredibly difficult and often leads to self-loathing. I feel that the best way to measure my own success is by understanding how far I have come, which is incredibly difficult because we tend to forget the struggle it took us to get somewhere. I've always set my goals very high in hopes that they would enable me to reach out further and attempt to achieve the best for myself and my family. I want to be the best I possibly can so that I'm able to be intelligent, intelligent and valuable to create a better security for myself and my family. My goal is to get an interesting job as an aerospace engineer. Last summer, I did an internship down at Pax River Naval Station, in which I, in which I shadowed an engineer and learned about autonomous vehicles and underwater laser imaging. That experience made me incredibly excited for the future and showed me what I could do in the future. It was a very valuable experience that showed me what I should and aim to achieve. I look forward to my future, and I'm driven to meet my goals in order to be successful.
I was just going to say, you can come on up, and if your parents would like to say anything, you can speak into the mic.
Thank you.
Yep, it's getting ready. Do you have any more? No, you can come right on the front. Commissioner, do you want to take a picture first?
The grandparents want to come up?
Yeah, family, come on up. Come on up, take a picture.
But she says it into the order.
Go, and one, two, three. One more. One, two. Congratulations.
Congratulations again to Logan. In second place and winner of our $750 scholarship award for high school senior whose parent or guardian works for Calver County Government is the Deputy Lieutenant of C.L. Garrard at the Department of Public Works Water and Sewerage Division, Skylar Garrard. Skylar, would you please join me at the front with any friends or family that are with you? Good morning. Congratulations. Skylar, sports and immaculate, 3.94 GPA at Calver High School, where she was enrolled in numerous AP honors and even college courses. For four years, she followed the rigorous PLTW, Project Lead the Way biomedical sciences program at Calver High, and is interested in a health-related career with a focus in social work. In 11th and 12th grade, she was also involved with and a member of the National Honor Society. Further, she is an active volunteer in the community with over 100 hours of service at the Calver American Welfare League, where she dutifully volunteers her Sundays to do cat care. This is all to say, Skylar is an accomplished scholar, genuinely interested in helping others, and wants to make a difference in the world. Her dedication and enthusiasm for learning serve as an example to others. She is her own definition of, of success, and I think we can all agree that she will exceed our and even her own expectations. C.L., I hope you are as proud of Skylar as we are. Congratulations again, and we wish you the best of luck at Stevenson University.
Yeah. Come right up front. Perfect.
Awesome. Okay. One, two, three. One more. One, two. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
And that brings us to consent. There are four items under consent today. Department of Planning, Zoning, Historic Preservation Tax Credit 20022-06 Hampton Historic District. Item two, Department of Parks and Recreation Agreement with Calver County Health Department. Item three, Office of County Attorney, Removal of Trustee and Appointment of Successor Trustee. Item four, Department of Public Safety Fiscal Year 2023 Advanced Life Support Training Grant. Are there any objections to the items listed under consent?
I have none.
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, those items will be adopted as presented. That brings us to new business. Item one, Department of Economic Development Small Business Development Center. Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Okay. My name is Julie Oberg. I'm the Director of Economic Development. I'm here before you today for a new business item for our Small Business Development Center Memorandum of Understanding. The Small Business Development Center, also known as the SBDC, is a nationwide initiative of the Small Business Administration, funded and supported in Maryland by the Department of Commerce and state and local organizations, including the Calver County Board of County Commissioners. The SBDC assistance continues to be a critical resource for business owners in need of professional guidance. The ability to meet with a business counselor confidentially and at no charge to the client can be a lifeline that a business needs to survive after being closed or limited due to the pandemic. All expenses for business management counseling are paid with federal, state, and local funds, allowing entrepreneurs to avail themselves of these unique services without assuming financial risk. In April of 2023, Ms. Leona Charles was hired to be the new SBDC consultant for Calver County. She works a total of 35 hours a week to support businesses in our community. By working together, the SBDC and the Department of Economic Development were able to provide a tremendous synergy between the SBDC, Calver County businesses, and the department. Because the College of Southern Maryland is the host for the SBDC, and as a result of the agreement, we require a formal memorandum of understanding between the county and CSM to clearly delineate responsibilities and expectations. Both parties have reviewed and agreed to the terms, and the MOU will be in effect from the date of the signature through June 30, 2024. The fiscal impact is $48,900 allocated in the fiscal year 2024 Department of Economic Development budget, and the conclusion recommendation is that staff is recommending authorizing the board president to sign the SBDC MOU on behalf of the board.
Questions?
Motions?
Does the President want to make a motion, authorize the board president to sign the SBDC MOU on behalf of the board?
Second.
A motion of the second that we're authorized the president to sign the SBDC MOU on behalf of the board. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
That brings us to item two under new business, Department of Finance Budget Award Recommendation. Directors.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Sharon Strand, the Director of Finance and Budget.
G.R. Cosgrove, Acting Director, Public Works.
I'll go ahead and read the memo. Background. This project consists of the construction of a new approximately 102,000-square-foot, four-story county administration building with a parking garage. The work shall include, but is not limited to, site/civil, general construction, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, landscaping, technology, and security. Discussion. During the weeks of March 26, 2023, and April 2, 2023, advertisements appeared in two local newspapers, the E. Maryland Marketplace website, and the Calver County Government's Facebook page, soliciting bids for the reference contract. Three bids were received and opened on May 19, 2023. The bid tabulation from the bid opening and bid comparison are attached. See Attachment B and C respectively. The bids were thoroughly reviewed. The lowest apparent bidder, Forest Construction Company, lists its principal office as being in Montgomery County, Maryland, which allows a 10% local preference. And the second lowest apparent bidder, J.A. Shible Inc., trading as Shible Construction, lists its principal office as being in Calver County, Maryland. The Code of Public Laws, Article 5, requires that the preference be given to a resident builder over a non-resident builder that is equal to the preference given by the county or state in which the non-resident bid- in which the non-resident bidder has its principal office, but not to exceed $25,000. With the reciprocal preference applied, Forrester Construction Company is still the lowest apparent bidder and meets all the requirements of the specifications. Reference checks provided, satisfactory comments. Fiscal impact. Funding for this contract has been allocated in the County Services Plaza 2 Construction Account, CIP 00052, with spend category 51042. Conclusion recommendation. In accordance with Section 6-101 of the Code of Public Local Laws, it is recommended that the board adopt staff's recommended findings in Attachment A and award the contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Forrester Construction of Rockville, Maryland, as follows. Base bid in the amount of $38,759,888. Allowances, if required and approved by the county. One, emergency responder radio communication system allowance in the amount of $75,000. Two, conference room audiovisual in the amount of $100,000. Contingency in the amount of $3,875,989, and unit pricing, if required and approved by the county.
Questions? So, they don't have anything to say, I do. You know, for 18 months, you know, you scared us to death with what engineers were projecting this building was going to cost, over $500 or $550 a square foot. So I think we were all very pleasantly surprised when the bids were open last week and it came in at, what, $350 or $360 a square foot?
Correct, somewhere around there.
So it's like $12 million less than what we were scared it was going to be.
I think we were all shocked. The bidders were shocked that when they did the pricing from what I understand. We were shocked when we got them. Procurement was shocked when we got the numbers.
But we have reviewed all the bids. They're all pretty close. So it's not like there was one crazy one that you might be suspect. But they were all pretty close, and staff has thoroughly reviewed those contracts to make sure they meet all the specifications. So, just think we all breathed a pretty big sigh of relief after what you put us through for 18 months.
But you know, the one thing I'm happy about is, you know, we'd have bit that apple back then. What was that price per square foot? And there was a lot of pressure and a lot of, and so a lot of projects. Do it, do it, do it, do it, do it. You just can't do it for some of the prices that are out there. And I'm hoping this trend is to get back to a more normal number, a more reasonable number, because it's now made some of the projects, we just can't do them anymore. Because the square footage price is too much.
They're not going to go down.
No.
It did, apparently.
Well, it did, from some of the numbers that, um... We were hearing, I mean, all kinds of speculatory numbers out there, and this is more in line of kind of what you're used to seeing.
It is.
And to J.R. and Sharon, I want to commend staff for all the hard work they have put in. Anytime we had a question, it was answered quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
The cuts were made where they need to be made.
Yeah, so we have a little extra money left over. Maybe we can do a few things, so see how this all plays out. But we do appreciate all the staff time and effort and, you know, a lot of discussions back and forth and cutting and what we might have to cut, depending on what the bid came in at. So we do really appreciate all the effort and just glad to get the project off the ground.
As we all are.
Get staff back in one central location where they can serve the citizens of this county, because it's been very frustrating for us and for the citizens with staff being distributed in so many different places and unavailable. And it's just very frustrating, so we're very happy right now. Let's see how happy we are during construction. So gentlemen, lady.
Need a motion?
Any more questions or a motion, one or the other?
All right, Mr. President. In accordance, make a motion. In accordance with Section 6-101 of the Code of Public Local Laws, to adopt staff's recommended findings in Attachment A and award the contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Forrester Construction Company of Rockville, Maryland. County attorney, do you need all the as follows?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As follows, bid base in the amount of $38,759,888. Allowances by the county. Emergency responder radio communication system allowance in the amount of $75,000. Conference room audiovisual in the amount of $100,000. Contingency in the amount of $3,875,989.
And?
And unit pricing, if required and approved by the county.
A second?
A motion to second, I'm not going to repeat the motion because Mr. Hart read it exactly how the attorney said it has to be made, so... Is there any discussion on that motion?
Just that the allowances also have to be approved by the county.
I thought I had that in there. No?
He missed something?
Just the approved part. We got it.
It's very important.
Yes, yes. So we're good?
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When we go put a shovel on the ground?
I'll let you know.
I'll let you know. That brings us to item three under new business, Department of Planning, Zoning Text Amendment, Case TA 23-02. Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Good morning.
If it's all right, I'm going to forego reading the memo and jump right into the presentations, which cover just about everything that was in the memo. So first of all, text amendments are any changes that are proposed to be made to the Calver County zoning ordinance, and they have to go through a multi-step process. So we're here today for two text amendments, starting with 2302, and this is just the first step of the process. We're looking for direction to move forward through the process. So we're here to review and discuss the proposed text amendment 2302, which is to the Calver County zoning ordinance, Section 3-203, Uses 1 and 2, to allow automobile filling stations to be conditionally permitted within the Village Commercial sub-district of Lesby Town Center. Currently, there are other zoning districts within Lesby Town Center that allow this use, and I'll show you a map shortly. But there again, this request is to move it through the process, and the next step in the process would be a work session with the planning commission. So the amendment was received by application back in April to allow the Weiss Market in Lesby to have an automobile filling station associated with their store. And that store is located within the Village Commercial sub-district, and that use is permitted in adjacent sub-districts of the Neighborhood Commercial and the Village Edge. So this shows the location in red where the store is, and then several other uses, just to kind of give you a location of where this use would be. But this is the more important map showing the various sub-districts. So this isn't just allowing this use on the property that I just showed you. This is allowing the use in anywhere that is zoned Village Commercial. So if you look at this map, the Village Commercial is kind of in the center, towards the east side, southeast side. But then also notice where the arrows point to the Neighborhood Commercial and the Village Edge, where this use is already permitted today. This is the existing use chart, so...
Mary Beth, I'm sorry, if we can go back to the previous slide. So the history that I have is when I first came on, there was a zoning question about the two different shopping centers. So I inquired to everybody who was involved back then, why? And then what was, came back was, well, because of where the proposed gas pumps are, if fast food, things of that nature had been there, it would have been a logistical nightmare, because there's not the infrastructure in place for the traffic. The question I have is outside of that area over here, I don't have history on that. So I don't know what door that opens.
Okay, so this is, would allow gas stations only in that sub-district. So I can get you an analysis of the existing zoning, and I think what you're talking about is drive-throughs.
Well, and also too, what, because there's only two basic roads, right?
Right.
Right there, so what the impact is to... So like, so the person I talked to, they said, well, talk to me about, you know, this gas pump, where it is. And he said, okay, that's not an issue. That's not what was concerned way back then. And it was, a lot of people sat in on these, and I guess that was a hot topic. It was before me, but I don't, like I say, I don't know, and just pick a spot. I don't know what an... Because right now, it doesn't appear to be anything in some of those areas.
Correct.
So what does that open the door? Does that mean?
So it would only open the door in the area that's shown as Village Commercial, which is rectangular-shaped, kind of toward, in the middle, but a little towards the bottom of the screen, only allowing gas stations there.
So you could potentially open up another five or six gas stations?
If you found a property. And so this is just allowing them to propose. They would have to go through the site plan process.
What I have learned, the hard way in that College of Hard Knocks is, we set up the work session, it goes to the planning commission. Planning commission goes, well, there's nothing illegal or nothing out of bounds. Boom, then, and next thing you know, you go, how did this happen? So that, this is where I'm at my cautionary thing. It doesn't appear to be a little bit kicking the tires that there's any issue with what's proposed for that.
Right.
But getting the crystal ball out, I don't know what the consequences are down the road, because there is only two roads.
Sure.
So that's my fear factor. I don't know what door this would open.
So in order to allow, to get to the finish line, if we get through the text amendment and it gets adopted, they would have to propose, submit a site plan, and it would go the entire way through the site plan process, which now includes adequate public facilities, which the Commissioners adopted.
And that would be huge. And let me ask you with that, because there is only a couple players, and I'm going to leave the names out, but with these type of players that would do this, they will write substantial checks to buy anything existing. I can think of a spot that's right there on that map that probably could be purchased. But that road, there's no way it could support the type of traffic that this type business would do. In the past, all it had to do was satisfy a D. Get out to the closest artery, and it was fine. But this...
If you recall, we changed that to C.
Uh huh, right. And if I understand the new APFO, once we get dragged back to the finish line, will be a minimum of C to that artery and out of the county, correct? Or just to the largest artery?
I, that's the portion of adequate public facilities that Public Works does. I do know that it's a C-level service that it has to meet. I don't know what the extent of how far that C has to go.
So to give you just a small example, so when Dominion was building, they changed, well, not changed, but part of their schedule was, when they were towards the final phase, there was a group that was brought in, and I want to say, I want to say, and I could be wrong, but it was, I believe they were getting out at like 2:00 in the afternoon. All of a sudden, there were all these cars, because we didn't have the housing for that project. They were going across the bridge, they were going here, they're going everywhere. Next thing you know, it logjammed that traffic light that was over on the St. Mary's County side, right there before you get to 2:35, and it was a huge issue. I mean, it was unintended consequence from that. And then actually, that was back when we had discussions with them, and it was pretty much like, hey, it is what it is, because the way that was set. But that was one of those unintended consequences, you know, that that artery just couldn't handle. Because, you know, once again, it was already stressed with the bridge there. It goes down that single lane. So that's, you know, like I say, if I knew what I knew today, eight years ago, I would sure have done things a lot different in some places. And that's, this is one of those ones that just gives me that pause.
Okay.
You know, so that's where I'm a little cautionary of, I understand this, because it's black and white of where it's going to go. I know where it's going to sit, know the impact, but I don't know that impact. And I know once we open this door, I've seen the process enough times, it just seems to flow. So I don't know if a digger, excuse me, a deeper dive would be necessary. I don't know what the rest of the board feels. But I don't have a problem with what's proposed today, I don't.
Okay.
But that gives me a little pause. If all of a sudden XYZ goes there, and they have a customer count of 2,000, 3,000 a week, I don't know.
And it would be how many gas stations financially could be supported in that area as well?
Well, with that, I get that thrown at me all the time, and that's not county government's job.
No, it's not.
And I've stressed that to the planning commission. It's not planning commission's job to decide what business is allowed or not.
Right.
Is it legal, is it compliant?
Right.
You know, I mean, and with what I do, there's a million of them, you know, type thing. But my concern is the infrastructure to support that traffic. That's my biggest concern, so...
And they are allowed now in Village Edge, correct?
Village Edge and Neighborhood Commercial, correct.
They are allowed, yes. And they would still have to go through the site plan?
They would.
And meet all the adequate public facility requirements?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
If you, when you jump ahead and you look at what's allowed currently in the different zonings, it does seem strange that you can get a conditional approval for a gas station today in Village Edge, but you can't in Village Commercial.
Right. And I'm just not sure why.
I mean, that just doesn't make sense why you would have thought it would have been the opposite.
Right, yeah. You'd want it in the core, not in the edge.
And that's what initially got me asking that question. And then what was thrown at me was, you know, the biggest thing was if all of a sudden there was five drive-through restaurants, and all of a sudden that line backed all the way up, there was just, there is no property to obtain to ever relieve that traffic. I mean, you got what you got for eternity.
So as part of the site plan process, they also look at stacking. So be it a gas station, a drive-through, there are stacking requirements that you are, there's a certain number of vehicles. They have to like do a stacking plan to show us where the traffic's going to back up to. And you have to be able to accommodate multiple vehicles that won't back up onto a county road.
And the proposed text amendment is for conditional approval, which means they've got to go through, it's just not allowed. They've got to go through a more extensive process to even start the site plan.
And on this slide, it shows the seven conditions that have to be met. And so we're proposing, if we make this a conditional approval in the Village Commercial, that they would also have to meet these seven conditions, just like they do in the other districts.
And they would be subject to the new APFO?
They would, because we don't have...
Because even though it's not in place and anything, so, and that's my fear too. So this APFO could take a minute. By the time we're done kicking it...
Oh, it's done. It's in place. And so what we're doing now is, there are a handful of projects that are grandfathered that were submitted before the adoption of that APFO. So that's been adopted, and anything henceforward from December that gets submitted has to meet those requirements.
Do you see anything that gives you pause?
Not really. I think that all of the concerns that you have will be analyzed through the site plan process. You know, where the stacking goes, how much traffic it's going to generate, things like that. I think that'll all be addressed. And we certainly wanted it in an area, because it'll be within the existing parking area that they, we're going to check that they still have adequate parking. And so I think, I think that'll all be addressed through the site plan process if they're able to get the text amendment and move forward.
And today feels like a work session, but it's not a work session.
Right.
Commissioner Hart's questions, you still have an opportunity to answer those questions.
Yes.
And regardless of what the planning commission does, I've seen this board override their recommendations.
True.
So it's not like we're making the decision today to open, allow this.
Right, just to move forward.
Gotcha.
And so the next slide shows two red Cs, which would, which is what the actual amendment to the ordinance would be, is to allow this as a conditional use, meeting the conditions on the previous slide and in the Village Commercial. So with that, I'm looking for your direction.
I move that we direct staff to move forward with a work session with the planning commission to begin the public adoption process for TA number 22-02.
Second.
A motion to second, any more discussion on that motion?
It's 04.
2302 is this one. Twenty-three O two is this one. O four is the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're fine.
Twenty-two O two, gotcha.
Twenty-three O two.
He's trying to get to lunch.
Twenty-three O two?
That one says twenty-two O two.
Is there any other discussion?
No, I don't know.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the next one. Department of Planning and Zoning.
Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. We have a second text amendment, um, that we were going to review. This is text amendment twenty-three O four, proposed to the Calver County zoning ordinance. Section three dash one point ten, use twelve, to expand accessory uses permitted at public recreation areas. The, again, the request is to move it forward to the planning commission. So staff received this request from our own Department of Parks and Recreation, when we recognized that you cannot build an indoor recreation fi- facility at our parks. You can build, um, the buildings are limited to very specific uses, and I'll, I'll show you on, um, the next slide. But, um, we are proposing to allow indoor recreation facilities at public parks. So the use currently reads, um, it's a conditional use. And buildings are permitted only if they are accessory to the primary use, such as restrooms, dressing rooms, equipment storage, maintenance buildings, open-air pavilions, accessory offices, meeting spaces, et cetera. So what we're proposing is to add buildings associated with or accessory to the primary use, such as indoor recreation facilities, and we're also adding community centers. And that's that text amendment. So it's really just amending the condition to allow indoor recreation facilities or commercial, or community centers on our public parks.
So it's gotta be a recreational park, can't be just any county property?
That's correct. This actual use is public or nonprofit park and/or recreation area. So this is the use. Now, if there were, um, other governmental properties where you wanted to do recreation, um, I guess we would have to somehow establish it as a park, and then it would fall under this category. Otherwise, we have another use category in the use charts called public or governmental owned, and pretty much that's permitted in any zoning district. So if you wanted to build a public-owned building, non-park, it falls under a different category.
So if we bought an existing building and wanted to convert it to a recreational use?
If that, um, is deemed a park and becomes some, something that Park and, Parks and Recreation is in charge of, if we called it a park and, yeah.
Is it that simple?
That's my next question.
To me, it is, because when, when something's proposed, um, we find a best fit on the use chart. That's how zoning works. You have to be a category on our land use charts, and so it would be fitting that in a land use chart. So if it's an existing building and the county buys it, it would be a county-owned building, as long as what goes inside of it is permitted, um, yeah.
But if it's not, then you're back to a text amendment.
Potentially. So let me take a look at that, and I'll, I'll run some scenarios by staff. And if we have any concerns, we'll bring that to you.
I think we had a little, um, situation where we were looking at a facility, and at some point we were told zoning didn't allow recreational facilities in that zoning.
And that could be private, could, may be different.
But if we bought it, in that scenario, all we would have to do is designate a park, and that would.
Then it would fall under this land use category.
And we wouldn't have to worry about zoning.
It would be compliant with zoning. You always worry about zoning.
County attorney, if I start to miss step, please slap me back in line. Would this be the venue that sends, with text amendments, with, with properties and peers and things of that nature? Is this?
Accessories.
Accessories?
No, that's a whole different category. So, uh, accessory structures are in the very last section of the land use chart, and that's something that we'll be addressing during the update to the zoning ordinance, to where.
But we will?
We will.
Okay.
Yes, we will be having that discussion.
Okay. I just didn't wanna miss the window.
Plenty of opportunity.
Are we gonna have a meeting like this for guidance on that?
Yes, we can, absolutely. We are trying to, um, take the zoning ordinance changes in bite-sized chunks, chapters, um, and so then, within those chapters, we have specific items that we want to discuss. Um, I know we wanted to have a further discussion on electronic message center signs, so we'll be doing that. Density and, um, accessory structures, absolutely. When we get to that section, we will highlight those for discussion.
Just my twenty percent, you've heard me scream this for years. You know, as staff starts to retire and move on to other things in life, a lot of institutional knowledge is going to go with it. And so the next generation is prepared. I don't want them stepping into, well, why can't I do this? Why can't I do that? I think this would be the group to best handle things that maybe were antiquated and outdated and just didn't apply anymore, or maybe you, you things were done with the best intention, but misconstrued. I would really like to clean that all up, so that the handoff to the next generation would be a much easier handoff, and they could just focus on those days' problems, instead of things that we knew maybe didn't make sense, but we didn't change it.
And that staff has been very instrumental in writing the update. So the senior staff is there to advise, and we know the issues and the problems that we've had in the past, and they're, they're there with new perspective of, well, how come you can't do this? You know, asking the hard questions, so.
Please, a very common sense, because it's so hard to try to have that conversation with somebody that says, but this doesn't make any sense, or it was done like that for a hundred years. And I know things have to change, and things and times change, but sometimes if it ain't broke, you don't fix it. Sometimes it feels like it gets fixed.
And always thinking about unintended consequences, yes.
Yeah. So that's my just twenty percent.
And we're gonna have another meeting to give direction for a work session?
Correct.
On zoning amendment changes?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the public hearing on the twenty-first.
Of June?
Of June. To discuss whether or not we're gonna pause moving any more text amendments, um, yes, that's June twenty-first.
I don't think, but we're talking more about rewriting the current zoning regulations than we are for more text amendments.
That work session will be after the public hearing. Same day.
On the twenty-first.
On the twenty-first.
And.
So I would advise my fellow commissioners, get their list together?
Yes.
And I don't wanna open up a huge can, and you can please correct me on my verbiage. We had a discussion a couple years ago about how we adopted it, where we, different states have different, you know, and, and I believe you told me we took a universal, if I'm saying that right.
Yes.
It was a universal code, so to speak, or adopt, or whatever it was. And where some jurisdictions didn't hardly have anything in place, we just adopted this. Can we deviate from that and still just have that as a guideline? And, and, I mean, or do you have to stick with that one, or just you have to throw it away and start over?
So we just feel like the existing zoning ordinance is, it's hard, not only for the citizens, sometimes for staff. Because, take for example, if you're in the residential district, you may have to go to several different chapters to determine what you can and can't do on your property. What we've tried to do with the update is, there is a chapter on residential zoning, and your setbacks are there. And you're, everything's there except the uses. We kept the use charts all in the same place, so that you can compare. But, I mean, we took the approach of, it's not user-friendly, we wanna make it user-friendly. We kept a lot of the same information, it's just reorganized, and then tried to make those common sense changes.
And, and I know state of Maryland dictates a lot. So I know you're only gonna be able to move things, but so much. But you know, we live in a transient area. People come from other states and go, I never had to do this in a Tennessee, or things of that nature, and we're a lot tighter than a lot of other places.
Yes, and the state of Maryland has, uh, annotated code land use law that we have to follow. So there, yes, there are states that don't have zoning.
Yes. So I know there is some restrictions with that. I just don't know where that line is, you know, um. And I, I joke, you know, Mark corrected me when we stopped something on the height of a step, and I'm blowing him up about this, the dumbest thing I ever heard. And darn if I didn't fall down a bunch of steps out of place, I kid you not, I still got the scar. I was rolling a hand card down it to the place I wouldn't, I had never done it before, and the steps are too small, I kid you not. And I called him up, and I said, God, I was thinking about you.
So I would have rules.
Yeah, I'm laying on the concrete. I didn't bust any cases, though, but I was laying on the concrete, and I'm going, I.
Thank God. No money was lost.
Yeah, I missed that step completely, and I went zooming down there, and I called him up, and I said, now I understand what you're talking about. So I'm not talking about, you know what I mean?
Health, safety, and welfare, that's what zoning and our codes are all about.
I just want it to make sense and be, cause I'm, it just a little easier for the reg- regular person to understand.
Sure.
Trying to illuminate saying no.
Yeah, yeah. Pat Nutter always said, you know, that, that says what we can't do, let's see what we can do.
I agree.
Mr. President, I got a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move that we direct staff to move forward with work session with the planning commission to begin the public adoption process for TA number twenty-three dash O four.
Have motion to second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
That brings us to old business, item one, Department of Public Works.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Mark, Mr. Division Chief of Highway Maintenance. Subject today is a budget adjustment request for highway customer service requests. Background, a public hearing was held by the Department of Public Works on May twenty-third of two thousand twenty-three to discuss the budget adjustments. The two budget adjustments would transfer four hundred thousand and three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to the Highway Maintenance Contract Services account. Discussion, the Department of Public Works initially allocated the funds for sand and salt during the winter operations of two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. However, the department encountered no significant weather events during this season. When developing the operation budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, the Department of Public Works allocated funds for replenishing the salt stockpile. However, because of the mild winter and minimal snowfall, the Department of Public Works requests two budget adjustments. Adjustment number one is BA zero 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 one eight, seeking to transfer four hundred thousand dollars from the Public Works Highway Maintenance Snow Removal Account. And number two is BA zero 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 three eight, seeking to transfer three hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the Public Works Highway Maintenance Snow Removal Contractors Account. These adjustments would bring a total of seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to the Public Works Highway Maintenance Contract Services account. The transfer of the seven hundred and sixty-six thousand to the Highway Maintenance Contract Services account will allow the Department of Public Works to utilize the additional funds to fulfill customer service requests for highway maintenance repairs. The fiscal impact, as a result of the BAs, the seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars would be redirected and added to the Department of Public Works Highway Maintenance Contract Services account. The conclusion, the Department of Public Works requests that the Board of County Commissioners adopt and enact a resolution approving budget adjustment BA zero 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 one eight and BA zero 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 three eight. Thank you.
So this is gonna add almost eight hundred thousand dollars to the budget account for contracted services, correct?
Correct.
Offhand, you know what that current budget number is?
Not right now, no, you don't.
And you'll be able to do the extra work?
Sir?
Are you gonna be able to do the extra work?
I believe so, because we're gonna be, we're gonna be hitting up multiple contractors to get this done. So we ought to be able to expedite the usage of it and to get those, uh, customer service requests resolved.
And do we have a priority list that we have formed?
We are working on that. Um, we just had a couple incidents through its head last week that we're getting some pricing on that are moving up in the priority list that may bump some of the other stuff back out. So we're balancing some of those estimates.
Okay.
Motion?
Sure.
Mr. President, I move we close the record and enact and adopt a resolution approving budget adjustments BA eighteen and BA thirty-eight.
Second. Have motion to second, that we close the record and enact and adopt a resolution approving budget adjustment BA eighteen and BA thirty-eight. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to old business, item two, Department of Finance and Budget, adoption of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four operating budget.
Yeah.
It ain't over. They're all saying, thank God, this day has finally come, and I'm already telling them it ain't over.
Never, it's never over.
Ever.
This is just another step.
Tomorrow's day one.
Good morning. Yes, still good morning, Commissioners. I'm Sharon Strand, the Director of Finance and Budget, and I'm here with Beth Richmond, Deputy Director of Finance and Budget. I'll go ahead and read the memo. Background, two public hearings were conducted, the first on March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and the second on March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, to present and receive public comment on the staff-recommended budget and the commissioner's budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Discussion, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four general fund operating budget totaling three hundred and eighty million, six hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars is a balanced budget. Overall, the revenues that fund the budget increased by approximately thirty-eight point six million in comparison to fiscal year two thousand twenty-three adopted general fund budget. The thirty-eight point six million increase is comprised of a twenty-two point three million increase to property taxes, a three point two million increase to income taxes, and eighteen point six million increase to use the prior year fund balance for pay-go, and a five point five million decrease to other revenue categories, which includes health insurance reimbursement. The fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget continues to focus on providing funding for education, public safety, capital investments, while maintaining a high level of service to our community. Thirty-two million of the increased revenues will be used to restore funding to the Capital Improvement Plan and to provide additional funding to the Board of Education. The other notable increases include technology services, the Sheriff's Office, and career EMS. Funding towards education remains the primary focus of this budget, at forty-one percent of the general fund operating budget and twenty-two percent of the six-year capital project budget. Education funding for operations of a hundred and fifty-four point seven million is provided, which is thirteen point four million over the funding provided in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. There are fourteen point seven six new employees in this budget, including four for public safety positions. This budget includes one salary step and a three percent cost of living adjustment for county employees. The fiscal year two thousand twenty-four general fund operating budget has increased by thirteen million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars since the public hearing held on May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Attachment A outlines the changes. Fiscal impact, the tax-supported general fund operating budget is increasing by eleven point two eight percent over the prior year. Conclusion recommendation, staff recommends that the board close the record and approve and sign the resolution adopting the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget and the related tax rate and fees.
Questions?
I just have a statement I wanna read, I wanna say before we vote. Is this the time?
Yes, sir.
So I've done a few of these, and I wanna kinda lump this in with a little bit of last year and today. So this three hundred and eighty thousand is the largest budget I've been a part of. Sorry, sorry, three, yeah, eighty million, thank you. Um, I think when I got here, it was less than three hundred. I mean, I don't even wanna say a number, but I don't think it was close. And there's only a few sources to generate this income. We, as we all know, property taxes, you know, we have two major energy facilities, income tax, but the bottom line is, it's not limitless. It seems, and I, and I'm just generally speaking, and I don't mean to throw this at any, not throwing this anything in particular, but there seems to be, if you don't fund something, you don't care. If you don't fund something, you don't support it. The question isn't, can, is never, can the county afford it? Can the taxpayers afford it? That's not the question. Question is, if you don't support it, if you don't give me what I want, I don't vote for you. Think about that, and I'm just speaking my twenty percent. Why in the world would you vote for anybody that the latest person through the door could push them to vote that way? So if your issue was important, if you said, well, I need this, and the guy says, okay, well, I do that, and the next person comes in and says, well, I need that. Next thing you know, you have to pay for it, more so than what you're doing now. Because the path that we're on is not sustainable. We cannot, we, I mean, I've watched this thing grow over eighty million dollars. It's not sustainable. Does it mean you don't care? Does it mean that, you know, well, you just gotta cut this and cut that? It gets to the point, there is nothing left to cut, so, and, and I'm gonna probably be wrong, but when I got here, I wanna say steps and colas, it'd been six years, if I'm saying that right, before steps and colas were done. And that was the big, the big outrage, and we were promised this, we were promised, we couldn't even pay our obligation to employees. So my first year, taxes were increased, and I didn't have the guts, I'm not criticizing the people that did it, I didn't have the guts to increase the taxes, it was an eight million dollar shortfall. Now, the Commissioners before then had seen good times. They had seen when property values went up here, and you heard everybody say the rainy day fund. Well, it started raining, and there was no stopping. And till Dominion came, it was still going on that, that thing, and I know there's some people that haven't been here that long to remember that. But I would just wanna ask folks in the future, I, I mean, don't just speak of me, Facebook's not gonna make me vote a certain way. It's just not, you know, I, I'm not gonna put it on the next generation. I was criticized for those statements, and I still stand by that. The federal government is doing a, 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 uh, see, uh, increasing the ceiling, seems like every time we turn around. Well, the ceiling's put in place because somebody somewhere thought, okay, we can't afford to pay any more than this. But then the requests come in and go, well, I guess we were wrong, we can pay that and pay that. But where does it stop? And, and there's only one solution, and that's back to the ninety thousand people that live here, you will pay that bill, some way or the other. So every time there's an ask, and if you grant every single ask, you, you have to pay for it. I mean, some people say, well, how come other jurisdictions have that? They either have more people, I mean, not two jurisdictions are the same, they have more people, they might have a higher tax, uh, rate. But ultimately, you have to pay for it, and it just seems, and not everybody, I call it the unsilent minority, gets evil with this thing, you know? And it's nothing like that you, you, you charge the board with your money. You charge it with your property taxes, your income taxes, um, services, things of that nature. You just can't fund everything, and it's not personal, it's really not. And when I've asked people, would you be willing to raise your taxes for this, a lot say no. Now, some people say, yeah, you could raise my taxes, but it would caution you that, um, you know, can everybody afford that? There's a part, you know, smiles never been so busy. I remember we, we wrote a check to the food pantry, never been done before. So we caution just to think about your fellow citizens and the ninety thousand out there. I worked for a man, and I know he didn't invent this slogan, but he said, there's needs and wants. You know, some of these things, they're wants, they're not basic needs. And I would just hope that going for, in the future, that we would stop that every time I don't get my way, I'm just gonna get on social media, and just me, I would welcome the conversation of why this is a need. Why, you know, I mean, so, and, and I don't mean to get on a tangent, but, but something's got to stop. I mean, I just, God, with last year, and this, this constant, constant social pressure, and having everybody believing that the, the, the sky is falling and it's just not. But I think we, we owe respect to each other to, to talk about some of these things and not just go, well, X amount of millions of dollars. I mean, if you're paying attention and watching this budget, I've never seen numbers this big. And maybe that doesn't scare everybody else, but it does me, and it does for the next generations of, it's just you can't keep adding ten percent or five percent or whatever. It's just not sustainable unless we become a county that says, you know what, we're just gonna raise taxes every year. So, that's, sorry, all I have, Mr. President.
Any other discussion?
I do have a comment. So this was my first budget, and, um, I was told that the first budget is always the toughest one.
I hope that holds true.
But I would like to thank my fellow Commissioners for the hard work and support that they have put into this. We have all worked extremely hard with this budget, and especially President Hans, Vice President Hart, for all the help and support they gave us through this budget process. Like Vice President Hart said, the dollar bill only goes so far, the pie is only so big, and we have to spend it for our citizens. It's very difficult. I also would like to thank Dr. Townsell and Mr. Jones for the open communications that we had in this budget process. I think it was been first time for years coming, but it was enjoyable. Uh, we got through it, and I hope that all the discussions, uh, from the meetings are held without, throughout the budget. So, thank you.
I would also like to say it's been a learning process for me personally. Most of our costs are recurring costs, as Commissioner Hart was saying, and it's not gonna go down. Contractual services continue to climb, um, technology, unfortunately, costs a lot of money. Our focus is to ensure that citizens at county, um, are continued to be provided with the services that they're used to. We've become accustomed to keeping safety, um, at the forefront, and we're gonna continue to do that as well. As far as blueprint goes, the blueprint's definitely been a challenge. Um, and as Commissioner Cox said, working with Dr. Townsell and his staff and meeting with us and having that open lines of communication. Um, I haven't seen it in the past. Um, it's, it's been wonderful, it really has. Having that opportunity to, to bounce things off of one another and to make cuts where we can and, and to be as fiscally responsible as we possibly can with taxpayer dollars. Thank you to the entire staff, I guess, for assisting with the budget process. Um, every department's affected by it, everybody acknowledges their deadlines, and, uh, Mark was, thank you for helping us do this as well. Thank you.
The blueprint has been a challenge, and we've not seen anything yet. It's still not over. That, that puts us in a position to stretch funds that may or may not be there. And I wanna thank the staff. I've, I managed a budget for five years, and I've never seen anything like this year, I truly haven't. To try to stretch that budget and to accommodate what we are supposed to do, what we can't turn our backs on. But we found the money, we pulled the budget together. I think it's a good budget, couldn't have done it without the help of staff. And, um, Mark was great, Sharon, your staff, and, um, and Buddy and Mike gave really good guidance as well as what to expect, and, um, I'm ready for the next one.
Just a couple of weeks.
Oh, well, it's gonna happen. Once you, you're never finished with budget.
No.
We always have balls to juggle to get through the next one and the one after that, and then we start all over again. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
In motion?
Sure.
Mr. President, I move that we close the record and approve and adopt the resolution adopting FY two thousand twenty-four operating capital budget with the total appropriation of three hundred and eighty million, six hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars. And additional expenditures reflected in Attachment A memo in adopting and setting the tax rates, fines and fees being effective as reflected in the resolution.
Second. I'm not gonna repeat the motion, but we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So I too wanna thank staff. As I've said many times during this process, this year has been different, but I think they've all been different if I've really looked back at them. But, and people will look at this budget today, uh, based on where we started and, you know, we plugged in some numbers. We still don't know what the revenue is. I think this is the first year I've ever seen where we still have no... But we are very confident that by the first quarter, end of the first quarter, we're gonna have a good handle on the revenue from our two energy pro- projects here in the county, and that, uh, I also don't believe that this budget, the final number for education is finalized yet. I think before the end of this year, there's gonna be more money going to education. And, uh, you know, we were all shocked when the superintendent came in and asked for twenty-four million dollars, but I wanna thank the superintendent and Mr. Johnson for all their efforts and time and explanations. And, uh, that's why I say we're not done, we've still got work to do. And to the citizens out there, uh, you know, we ended up with, today, we're giving them thirteen and a half million dollars. And I've said, we're not done, I don't believe, before the end of this fiscal year. But next year, they're gonna be back for at least that much again, because of blueprint. I don't know if we're halfway through, so just be ready. And I told all my fellow Commissioners, just be ready, this ain't done. And next year, they're gonna be back for another fifteen million dollars. And, uh, unfortunately, you know, or fortunately, you know, it's put quite a strain on the school system. And, uh, you know, when I look at our neighboring counties, it, it's, it's a struggle to understand why our school system needs twenty-four million and those other school systems are getting by with seven or eight. Uh, I'm still challenged to figure that out, to be perfectly honest to everybody. But we've gotta meet the obligations of blueprint, and we've gotta, we're gonna pay all of our staff the same, we are not gonna discriminate. And that's, we've put that own burden on ourselves. But, you know, I got an email as early as yesterday, why aren't you giving the school ma- school system twenty-four million dollars? And, um, just to be honest, we're doing the best we can, and, uh, I wanna thank my three new Commissioners, 'cause, doing the budget process the first time is a learning experience, and this year has certainly been a challenging learning experience for the three of you. So, but it ain't over. I don't care what you think about the way we're stuck, but it ain't over. It, this ain't over. Uh, you know, we've, we've told Dr. Townsell, we're gonna re- reconvene and, um, do what we can do, but first we have to know what our revenue is, and we really won't know that for a few more months. And so at that time, we'll reevaluate where we are, but the law is the law, we're gonna follow the law.
Right.
With that, uh, we talked enough about this budget, and at least we're gonna get a break for a couple of weeks, right?
Yep.
So I wanna thank you two ladies and all your staff for all your effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your guidance and direction, and we'll see you in a couple of months.
Yeah. That brings us to a presentation by the Election Board. Ms. Hatfield. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Good afternoon.
I get to be the first to say good afternoon.
Yeah.
I'm Gail Hatfield, um, Elections Administrator for the Calver County Election Board, and this is...
Kristen Scott, Executive Administrator.
The reason we are here pretty much is on the behalf of you all as a request to kinda keep you in the loop, keep an update. Uh, as things change, I like to keep you all as updated as possible as to what's happening in the election world. So we've got a short presentation, and then, you know, you all can ask questions, and of course, some of these things are out of my hands, like we all know. But, uh, where's this next slide? Okay, so this is, this is basically, um, just to show you all that the election day voting, you know, in-person is still the preferred way to vote. It's gone down because of the early voting and mail-in ballots, but as you can see, compared to both, it's always the in-person. People, you know, prefer the in-person. But you can see where you can see the, towards two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-two, in the general elections, as you can see, the mail-in ballot and the early voting has definitely increased. And the next one is basically just another statistical one that shows how since two thousand ten, that's when early voting began, that the early voting, as you can see, was consistently increasing. I think that it's coming to a point of leveling off, I'm not sure yet, because as you can see, mail-in ballot and early vote were basically neck and neck um, in the last cycle, so maybe in two thousand twenty-four, we'll have a better idea whether we're gonna go with more early voting or whatever. All right, mail-in ballots for two thousand twenty-two, this is just a statistic one, too. Basically, we did send out ten thousand three hundred and eighty-four ballots, we received nine thousand and four back. We accepted eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven, seventeen of them were rejected, basically because they didn't mail them until after the election was over. So can't, can't count something we don't have. There's also a new thing with this permanent mail-in. So we now have six thousand four hundred and seventy-two voters that have actually signed up to be on a permanent mail-in. So this means automatically, we're gonna be mailing them a ballot, which is definitely a change from previous years.
Is that ten percent of the registered voters?
Uh, about, I mean, we're talking about, yeah, we're talking about sixty-some thousand, and you're talking already that we have that, that, that many that are already signed up as permanent, and there probably, there may be more, you know, coming.
Do you see a time where they're gonna mail, I mean, they're gonna vote online?
I hope not in my time.
I mean, with the mail-ins increasing like that, you know, makes you think, are we gonna see a day where they're gonna go to a voter website?
And have a encrypted, a way to, I mean, that's a possibility, because you know, legislation keeps, you know, coming up with different ideas.
I was thinking that when I was reading through this, and I was seeing, you know, the increase, and then, I mean, permanent mail, I mean, that was never a thought, even a few years ago. At you, you got up and you went, you stood in line.
Exactly. Election day was one day, you showed up and you voted, and then it was over. Now we're at how many days of election days?
I just reading that thinking, you know...
There's a big difference right there, as you see, when it, you're talking about cost, there you go. We had one day, you showed up, you voted, you were done. Now we're at, what, eight days, we have mail-in, we have a lot of options.
And I could just foresee to where they said, well, now there's no excuse to never vote, because
That's right.
that option is there, everyone has a phone, but if not, but I, I just say, I didn't know if there was, you heard.
No, it's not in the works yet, but there's always groups out there that are, you know, discussing things like that. Okay, so some of the changes that are going to affect the voters this year is, the first one, primary date is no longer in April. It was April twenty-third, legislation has changed it to May fourteenth. That was because of, uh, Easter, and there was, uh...
Passover.
Uh, the Passover. Passover was on that day, and of course, uh, you cannot vote on Passover. So that was changed, instead of going forward, whatever, it was changed to May fourteenth. So now that moves our early voting to May second to ninth of next year. So that's an important thing. We'll probably do some, uh, Q, you know, media outreach, just to let everyone know that, you know, when election gets closer, that it's gonna be in May. The mail-in ballots, this was another change, the applications will also be sent out again. So it's an automatic, everyone that's a registered voter is going to receive a mail-in ballot application in the mail. And at that point in time, they can sign up on the permanent, or they can choose to do nothing, and then that, you know, they'll go to the polls for early vote. But it's giving them the opportunity once more to get a mail- But it's giving them the opportunity once more to get a mail-in ballot. I believe this is going to be the last year that they're going to get that opportunity to go on, you know, automatically. After this year coming, they're going to have to basically apply. So that may increase our permanent mailing again, you know? So, but now just for the folks at home, if you are on a permanent mail-in ballot list, that doesn't mean basically that you are required to remain on that permanent forever. You can request to come off of that permanent mail-in ballots. I don't want people to think that, yes, it does say permanent, but that means, oh, I can never, I'm going to always, I can never go to the polls. No, they can request and we can remove them off of permanent and then they can go to the polls. So, and then we've got the notification of the mail-in ballot status. That was something that was changed that's important for us because that notifies the voter by text, email, whatever. When we get that ballot in hand, it lets the voter know that we have received it. When it is counted, it goes back into the system and then they know that it has been counted. So that's something the voters have been really anxious to know. This kind of keeps them away to track where their ballot is. And the signature curing is something that's allowing us to give us time before, you know, election day to be able, there's a lot of people that forget to sign their ballots. So this signature curing will give us the opportunity earlier to be able to contact these voters and have them either come in and sign that ballot prior to the election day. Or we can send a form to them, have them sign that form and get the form back and attach it to the ballot. Because we cannot count any ballots if there's no signature. And, you know, so for us, this is a good thing because it gives us more opportunity to, to have time to make sure those votes are counted. So let's see, where are we at next? Okay, some of the changes from legislations that are going to impact the staff is that we now have to submit a polling place plan to the Maryland State Board of Elections. See, because we have twenty precincts now, you know, we used to have twenty-three, we have condensed down to twenty. Since we are not the same exact as what we were in twenty eighteen, actually all across the whole state, we have to now do surveys. We have to do ADA, we have to do this. And anyways, it has to be submitted to the Maryland State Board of Elections six months before the election. So we've got to do it on every single polling place that we have. And literally, we have to go out and take, what was it, pictures of buildings? And prove to the state why we're using a building as a polling place versus other buildings that are out there. We all know we have hardly any buildings out there as it is now. We've pretty much utilized almost every building that we can in Calver County. So we don't see where we're going to have a problem, you know, saying, oh, we can't use this because of this, you know?
So you mentioned, before you get too far along, you mentioned you reduced polling places a few years back.
In twenty eighteen.
If you look at the trends, you know, in the last two elections, and you know, like you say, you're going to wait until next election. But the number of people voting on election day is, is not going to come back.
No, it's significantly decreased.
And we have lots of locations in Calver County where there are polling places right across the street from each other.
Yes.
I'm, I'm, I don't have your job.
You're in my mind.
I don't have your job, but I can think of at least four polling places we could remove right now and it would not impact voters at all.
You are in my mind because you know that last election, Huntington High School became what I call a super precinct. Because Huntington Elementary was across the street. Remember, we had all these precincts. So what I did was because of the change in the legislative line, the change in the district lines gave me that perfect opportunity to what I say, combine those precincts into one. And that is pretty much in my future. There are some areas that I will probably bring up that I would like to do. Like Dunkirk, there's no place for Dunkirk to vote. The fire department is way too small. That's why, the reason why we were using the Fairview. We're using it for early voting, yes. But we were also using it on election day for the right side of the road to go to, to vote. Whereas the left side of the road has to go to Mount Harmony, both out of their district. And then, well, and that one's going to Northern Middle School. So in my mind, I'm already ahead of the game saying, why not put all of Dunkirk in, not in Northern Middle, but in Northern High? Northern High is big enough to accommodate a larger precinct, just like Huntington High is.
Well, in Lesby, you've got four polling places within a mile of each other.
Yeah, that's in, that's in the back of my head, too, is to going, a super center for the range club.
Yeah, you walk right across the street.
Because you have Mill Creek, you have Patuxent High, you have Patuxent Elementary.
Community Center.
You know?
And Community.
Well, and the community center, well, we used that because we couldn't use Southern Middle at the time, but you're right. The community center is big enough to accommodate a super center or Patuxent High School. So you, you're going down the same route that I'm, I'm going and would like to go and have this taken care of. And the reason being is because mail-in ballot has gone up, early voting has gone up. We have more centers for early voting now and less people are showing up on election day, so why not?
We got seven days.
Yeah. We have, what, seventy-eight hundred? I had seventy-eight hundred in that super center for Huntington High School. Do you know there was no line, no wait?
Well, I just think you have seven days to, I mean, you got, right, seven days, ten days?
It's eight days for early voting.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, yeah.
But on election day, I had seventy-eight hundred voters for it.
Vote to where somebody could say, you know what, I'm not going to stand in any line, I'm so toasty, I'm coming home, I'll whip in, you know? So, you know, it's-
So buddy, I'm with you. I'm already thinking ahead, I'm thinking cost-wise, I'm thinking condensed, that takes less election-
We're struggling to get judges anymore.
And it's hard to get judges, that's the main reason.
Half a dozen polling places, that reduces your requirement for-
I'm at two hundred and eighty right now, that I cannot do it without two hundred and eighty election judges. And we're going to be going to the next screen. I'm not sure if you have been told, but, well, okay, I'll just finish this and then we'll go to the one. There we go. The new legislative bill that just passed. And I know the League of Women Voters, they were a huge supporter of it because we just had a meeting with them, too. Right now, I'm going to tell you, our election judge pay, what we pay our election judges is a hundred and seventy-five dollars a day. Two hundred dollars a day for chief election judges, okay? Our training for each one is twenty-five dollars. This new law that just went into effect, as you see, is increasing the election judge compensation to two hundred and fifty dollars for election judges, two hundred and seventy-five dollars for chief election judges, which is looking at almost a hundred dollars more that they're getting per day. Now, we're saying this is times two hundred and eighty judges, right? For just election judge. And there's a new incentive because we can't get election judges. The legislators decided to pay them a hundred dollars a day bonus if they come back. In other words, if they worked last year in the twenty twenty-two elections and they show up for the primary into twenty twenty-four elections, they're going to get that two hundred and fifty dollars plus a hundred dollars. So they're going to get three hundred and fifty dollars plus fifty dollars for training, which used to be twenty, that's four hundred dollars for election day. Now, uh, that, our budget is sitting at a hundred and forty thousand, which is covering us right now at the one seventy-
That won't cost you a penny more. I can fix that so it won't cost you a penny more.
You can fix it?
Absolutely, get rid of those precincts. You should need two hundred and eighty judges.
That's true. But then we have eight days of early voting.
But you don't need two hundred and eighty judges for eight days?
Nope, but you need a minimum, if you're going to make a super precinct, of course, I would use fourteen judges, but a super precinct, we use twenty-two judges, which is okay, because that's like three precincts going into one, so it's still less.
So it's still less.
But for early voting, it takes three hundred and thirty-six judges. Because you're eight days, three sites, right, fourteen judges. So you have to have fourteen judges in each site, three times, times eight days, which gives you three hundred and thirty-six. But at that fee, my hundred and forty thousand just went down the tubes.
You just blown our budget that we just adopted.
And it just went up to two hundred and thirty-two thousand, which now makes me a shortage of ninety-two thousand. So I'm sitting here listening to y'all and I'm like-
But you know, Gail, this is-
But this is the max, it could be less because, you know.
But Gail, this is kind of like what I was talking about earlier. State of Maryland has a thing now where you just throw money at everything.
Just do it.
With no accountability whatsoever, everything, you know, is the unfunded mandate. We've seen it from several boards down the line. And the mindset is, we want everyone to love us. And how better way to make you love us, throw money at it? And then you go down to the lowest, local jurisdictions and you say, well, just raise the taxes. That is, you see it over and over and no matter what it is, and that, that's just one in many, there's just-
They're giving us fifty dollars. You see that? The state says they'll reimburse us fifty dollars per judge.
It's better than nothing.
What was, what did, what did, we getting for blueprint, one point eight?
Yeah, we're getting one point eight for blueprint, it's going to cost us probably thirty million dollars by the time we're done.
And they get one point eight?
You're doing good.
Then you still take the, still take the highway years of money? Still have the pension shift?
And then gave us that one point eight, yeah. Yeah, I mean, you can, you can go all day long and then, and then, you know, it's like, then you're the bad guy. I'm like, you know where Annapolis is? Make the call, you know?
I think you have the right idea cutting your precincts down as much as you possibly can.
And that's the reason I was showing you the charts, because it's showing you, yes, election day is still the highest of turnout. But it has come from way up here down to here because the other two-
In a very short time.
Yes, and the other two have leveled out. So-
Can you cut down your precincts between now and the next election, next year? Okay, good.
I'm working on that right now. But I just didn't want to jump the gun and everybody think I'm crazy because I'm-
No, you're not crazy.
I'm just trying to do, I mean, I've been running these for, like, August will be starting my thirty-eighth year. I've always been where it's, it's not my money, it's the, it's the county's money. And I've always tried to find a way to get the best quality for the voters of this county, but yet save the most money to get it done, too, so.
I was just trying to think of a solution for Dunkirk. The only area in Dunkirk I can think is big enough, if you could talk to the firehouse and let them use the bay area, that's plenty big.
Right, but there's no parking. You only have that little section down around, no parking. And they go up and they go down. And we were at the fire department, but they have outgrown it. They were using the little room downstairs, but we had people parking up top and then they'd have to walk, which isn't good for people in wheelchairs and things like that. So that was the reason why we went ahead and moved, we kind of already combined Dunkirk Fire Department in with Northern Middle School. Because Northern Middle School, the numbers came, you know, were fairly low. So we said, I'm going to combine them. But now we have people that say, I'm on one side of the road and I got to go to Northern Middle. And the other people are, well, I'm on the other side of the road and y'all are making me go to Fairview. But the problem is it's confusing because people want to stop at Fairview and say, well, I don't feel like driving down to the middle school. It's, it's a half a mile more. So now if I take them out of election day Fairview and force all of them go to Northern and take them to Northern High, then there will be nobody at the doors of Fairview on election day. So this, this is where my mind's going.
Let's do the best you can.
Yep, to try to save it. So we've already done the, oh, and another thing that they did change that does help us is that now we don't have to ask permission. Eight days prior to early voting, we can always begin canvassing our mail-in ballots. That's something I love to do. I, I love getting them done and out of the way before, you know, we start early voting. Of course, they're locked up in a safe, nothing is released until election night. But this does save us a lot of time after the election and it gets us to the final destination where everyone's looking for those final results. So, and we already, well, this is also another change, but we have to notify. If I change a precinct, like we're talking about right now, if I do this, then one, I have to, I have to notify you all, I have to notify like the central commission, we do this anyway. But now people can sign up with us on our election board website or something to say that, hey, I need, I want to know, or my organization wants to know. You know, if you make any changes, we want to know, in case it affects anybody differently. So that's just a new thing and we've already done that. And this was one, the last thing is, of course, like I said, we're looking for that permanent Northern, which we all just discussed. But I would like to see Southern Community Center used a little more. As you can see, this is what our early voting statistics were. Everyone's still coming to the office because that's where they know, that's where they go. Fairview did really good. I thought Fairview was very busy, that's why we're looking for it to be a little bigger, but, because it does get a lot of use. But the Southern Community Center was very slow. We put signs out on the Route Four, but-
Why didn't we use Mount Hope Community Center?
Oh, there's no way you could use Mount Hope. There's no parking. You know, you have to go up that little hill and just park in that little area and then it drops off. Or then they would clog up the dumpsters down there or the people would park in the road and, I mean, if you really look at it, it would be, unless you could-
Fairview is not the solution long-term.
No, but we don't want that to be long-term.
I say it's not, so you got to find something.
So that's kind of why we're looking, is there someplace in Dunkirk for the Northern End? Nothing in your parks. Something, we just have to keep looking.
Unless we put up a Butler Building at Ward Farm.
So- So that's it. Our last thing is our future improvements is basically our wish list, you all know our wish list for more space. We are getting new poll books, there will be new poll books in the precincts for the twenty twenty-four election, the state has already acquired them.
And they've cleaned them up completely, no dead people are on them.
Not on mine.
No people who moved out of state. Annapolis is going to clean them up.
You know that our county never has dead wood, is what we call it. We're very good at that. But we are getting new poll books for twenty twenty-four and the state has already started the process of a new voting system. The voting system we have, as you see, is already becoming outdated. And that is because we have visually impaired voters, they have to vote on the ADA machine, which is not fair because you have other people that are voting differently, so they're having to vote in a different type. So we're looking, well, not me, but the state is looking for something that will accommodate everyone. So we'll see, that's a twenty twenty-six thing going down the road.
And still paper ballots in Calver County?
Yeah, we're still at paper ballots.
Good, good.
No, we're, we're still paper ballots, even with our touchscreen that we have, it prints out the ballot for those and then it goes into there. And there we go, I had it already on here, see that? Consideration of changing polling places to the Northern High and like you said, taking Southern Middle and maybe moving it into the Community Center. Beach Elementary, I think we're taking it completely out because we couldn't use it before because they were renovating it. We sent them over to Sunderland, but now Beach Elementary is no longer even in the district. So they need to remain at Sunderland, so.
In the primary last year, of course, it was crazy because they moved it, but the Community Center at the beach, that was a disaster.
The Community Center at the beach?
Yep. We used the Community Center, where the water park is.
Yes, the water park.
A disaster.
And that's only one precinct, I don't even have that combined.
But-
That's just the town residents.
Early voting got pushed because of all the crap that was going on, but that was a disaster. Because the boat people won't let anybody park there.
The parking is, yeah.
They had swim lessons, there was a big fight with the town. You can't go back there during pool season.
No.
Cannot.
And sometimes it happens.
You can't.
But I don't have a choice of when they do the elections, but-
If they do that again, you got to find another polling place.
Over to North Beach, then we're going to have the North Beach to Chesapeake Beach thing going on, so.
And you mentioned earlier about people going to the wrong polling place and people can go to the wrong polling place, they can still vote.
Horrible there.
Where?
At the Community Center. It's not good at all because people will not let them park there.
No.
Just windy hill wasn't listed, there was an issue with windy hill last year, too, correct?
Well, windy hill is one that we've already, because of the changes, the legislative changes, we've already pulled windy hill. See, I've been working on this, we've already pulled windy hill, windy hill was shifted to Mount Harmony. Because Dunkirk used to be Mount Harmony also, which I then sent to Northern. So I, I've already been little by little just easing this to accomplish what you're saying.
If you could do that and keep us posted between now and the next election, that would be great because I'm in agreement, we need to reduce our precinct polling places, our precincts. And, um, and just make sure, like Northern High School, my gosh, that could accommodate the Northern End. The parking is great and let's- The parking is great and let's, let's just get rid of a few of them and consolidate.
That's my plan.
Thank you.
I figured just this way I'm ahead of you a little bit.
So you mentioned earlier, people showing up at the wrong place.
Yeah, they will.
But they can still vote there, right? They just give them a provisional.
If a person goes to the wrong place and like, let's say they're running out of time and this is the closest one, they can still vote, but it will be on a provisional ballot. And.
Some of the judges don't tell them that. They tell them they have to go to where they're registered. I heard that last time, several times.
That's preferred, that's preferred, but that is not required. That is not the law.
That's not what they told.
The law says if the person says they don't want to go.
The people said, the judge told me I have to go to where I'm gonna vote and some of them said, I'm just going home.
You know, you can train people and you can train people.
Maybe we put signs up on that precinct, if this is not yours, you will be required to fill out a provisional, but you can vote here. And that may.
That could be on all the precincts.
Right, as they walk in the door, you know, cause especially if they're standing there, you know, in that way, because I, I heard the same thing. I had them walk right in my store and go, wait a minute. I was right in there and they told me no. And they walked right in and I said, well.
Yeah, we don't want any, any voters start away.
From my understanding, no one's supposed to be told no.
Nope.
Right. Cause they've already gotten out of their car. They've already walked in.
Yep. Yep.
They're frustrated that.
We get them calling us too.
So like I said, maybe if we had a sign, that way they can point the sign, the judge can't tell them that they can't.
Right, and if they say no, say, hey, whoa, your sign says.
Yeah.
That's true. So we will maybe add that to our training and put it in their carts to go to the precincts. The fewer precincts that we have.
Seemed like the three locations worked out pretty good.
They were awesome. I can't tell you how many voters complimented the fact that they didn't all have to come to Prince Frederick. And that kept the lines down.
Mm-hmm.
Because of being divided three ways, I didn't have everybody wrapping up and down my parking lot.
It was easier. It was much easier.
It was definitely great.
If we could just get the word out and send some more people to Southern Community Center, that would be great. And I wanna thank you all for allowing us to get those temporary employees. Cause we did put in the budget for some temporary employees that will works the early vote. They're the ones, because of the law changing, staff has to be to open an early vote center and staff has to be the one to close it. So these people that I'm getting as a temporary worker are gonna be the openers and closers, which saves me my people in the office. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
We shall let you know next time around.
Okay.
And that brings us to public comment.
Thank you, sir. The board adopted resolution in nineteen eighty nine intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. A copy is found here to my right. The Ethics Commission has asked that we remind speakers of public comment that lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy and lobbyists must register in advance. The floor has been opened for public comment from persons in the meeting room who may begin making their way to the microphone, then those joining virtually. All speakers are asked to identify themselves, whether you're speaking as an individual, will you be allocated two minutes or as the designated representative of a group, will you be allocated five? For those attending virtually, if you wish to speak, please press star nine or use the raise your hand function. Virtual speakers will be identified by the last four digits of their phone number.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Jeffrey Smith, speaking for the, uh, Harriet E. Brown Commemorative Task Force. Just like to make a couple of comments. As I said, I'm a retired educator and it's good to have, uh, something being named for Harriet E. Brown. It's for a good cause. So, yeah. Just, I don't wanna hold you up because I'm getting hungry too. So thanks to the Board of County Commissioners for putting one million in the fiscal budget, two thousand twenty four budget as we requested. We hope this is sufficient to complete, complete the planning and full design for all the outdoor work, from grading and stormwater management and water sewer hookups to planting for courts, trails, pavilions, infrastructure and more. But it may not be, that is the amount of money. If it isn't, we encourage additional fiscal two thousand twenty four funding to do the job right. If the million dollars is not sufficient. It is great that Parks and Rec is already looking into additional funding. We have also provided them with funding ideas to help move things along. We urge you to make doing the grading and stormwater management a top priority. This is the essential steps. These unglamorous steps lay the foundation for all of the work that follows. We support phases to keep Harriet E. Brown Community Center and Park moving to completion. But too many phases will ultimately take a lot longer and cost a lot more. Penny wise and pound foolish, as the saying goes. So moving ahead in phases, but as few as possible to get the finish line, to the finish line is important to save our taxpayer money in the long run as you also provide this much-needed community center and park in Prince Frederick. It's good to see that your two thousand, uh, twenty-five budget plugs in ten million to actually do the outdoor site work next year. This is a great start, really a great start. And we recommend increasing this amount to jumpstart usage of, of this, uh, twenty-seven acres for Calver County citizens. And finally, uh, thank you, buddy, for your continued assurance that this will be done. And we look forward to working with all of you, all the county commissioners and the county staff to move ahead quickly to make the Harriet E. Brown Community Center and Park a reality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Joe Cormier and I'm gonna talk on behalf of myself today. I don't know if three minutes goes faster when I don't write it down or not. Uh, first, I wanna thank you. Uh, I chased all five of you down through the primary and through the general election about LGBTQ proclamations and support for the community. And today you followed through on those campaign promises to sign that proclamation and support them. As a child who grew up in the late nineteen hundreds, as my kids like to say, uh, it was not a good time to be gay in high school. And I had friends who were afraid to be themselves in high school. And when my mother came out, I was ashamed, I hate to say it now, but I was ashamed to bring my friends home because I didn't want to have to explain her girlfriend as the cousin, the aunt, the best friend, the roommate, whatever. And when I was in the army in the early two thousands, don't ask, don't tell was still very much a thing. And I had friends who couldn't bring their loved ones to the holiday dinner party or promotion ceremonies because you didn't ask, you didn't tell. So that my county government is proudly saying, yes, we will support that group in our community, means the world to me. Uh, as we talk about elections, I am all for the condensing and saving of money and, and putting things together. I just wanna make sure that we're being cognizant, that we're not removing polling places. That might be the only solution. But with mail-in voting and early voting, I think we're gonna do a good job here in Calver County and I trust those two people who were here today, cause they do a fantastic job. Uh, thank you for passing the budget and your support for education. I come in here and I talk about that as often as I can. And I, you guys win awards every year for your budgets. You, you, you get awards for doing those great budgets. Take that training and give it to the Board of Ed and say, this is how we build our budget. These are the, the best practices. And I, I know it, it's, it's hard to think about, but I know we could work together and build these things together and, you know, I don't want anyone to lose their job, but if there are redundancies between county government and school board, between PR departments and, you know, buying tires and buying, you know, heating, fuel and electricity and all the things that we can do jointly that saves us time and money, let's get those redundancies taken away. Again, thank you so much. I appreciate you guys. Support staff leads the way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Estes and I'm representing friends of, uh, uh, Hunting Creek. And I'm terrified because my printer wouldn't work and I gotta go off of this machine here. So I'm sure some of you understand those situations. So the comprehensive and town center master plan set forth, you know, visions and goals uh, for the county and town center's future, including land development, part of the, part of what they're looking at. But to implement those visions and goals, you have to have more detailed documents. Uh, and the zoning ordinance is certainly one of the key documents, uh, that you have to lean on. Draft zoning ordinance now available, has begun review process. But I think, uh, we can all agree in many ways, the zoning ordinance is, is just as important or very close to as important as the comp plan. So it should be treated similarly. It's how you turn a vision into reality. For, for that reason, the county's engagement with the public in review of the zoning ordinance should be handled in a manner similar to that of the comp plan. In fact, the county has a documented plan for engaging the public in the comp plan and zoning ordinance creation process and it's actually the same document. Uh, and that document is roughly dated twenty sixteen. And maybe you've seen it, maybe you haven't. You can get ahold of it fairly easily. So, you know, the purpose of the plan is to ensure early and continuous participation of the public during the process. Participation of the public. And that's, that's the goal. That's not just something they wanna do. It's a goal. Some, some methods of outreach for the public, uh, listed in the plan were press releases, emails to stakeholder, stakeholders, which is pretty much everybody that, uh, gets affected by the zoning ordinance. Direct mail, postcards, social media, online forums, uh, issue papers and public workshops and hearings. And, and there's a list of other methods there, but public workshops. An important, uh, piece of the puzzle, just like when we did the town center plan. So I became aware that the commissioners were not altogether satisfied with how the first steps in review, uh, process and, uh, and the call for the public comment, uh, which ended for the sections three through nine, which are key, uh, key sections, a deadline of last week. There were no workshops. There was no engagement with the public to speak of. So, call me an optimist, but all that week I anticipated hearing something from the county and saying, hey, well, this wasn't quite right. We're gonna fix this. Didn't happen. Uh, maybe it was premature. But I have to say, I was disappointed and I know others were as well. So the process of review needs to be reset, in my opinion, to include the public engagement and to include those sections that we've already made comments on. I think you need to restart. Restart from, and use, involve that plan of workshops and engagement with the public. You do wanna know what the public has to say about this. Otherwise, you're, you're kind of a little bit rudderless in, in some respects. So the public needs to know many things about the new zoning ordinance, including what has changed, why the changes are necessary, and what are the near and far term impacts? And by impacts, it could be traffic, it could be cost to the, uh, the budget. It could be, it's something as simple as, you know what? You're cutting down all the trees. How are we gonna stay rural? Yeah, they wanna know about that. Uh, I wanna know about that and I know others do too. So, uh, I also believe that many, um, of, in the county didn't know how to find, you know, some of the documentation easily. You have to understand, for us that are semi-immersed like me and people that are fully immersed like you, you can find stuff easy. You know what's coming and everything. Public doesn't. They do care, but suddenly it's comment time and they don't have good maps. They don't have good semi-digested resources. And that's how, if you really wanna hear what the public has to say, those are the sorts of things you gotta do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First up, what he said. That's my next crusade, but on to my initial one. Lynn Robinson, speaking as an individual. Um, the past weeks have shown us with increasing clarity that the decision to close Running Hair was based on some false and misleading information from the, uh, State Health Department. The Health Department has claimed that Running Hair has spent two years being non-responsive to their requests for restrooms. Evidence, um, shows eight months of active participation since they learned of the requirement last July. And when I say learned, I mean learned, not notified. The process is something like, Health Department told the engineers, the engineers told Mr. Willis, Mr. Willis told Mary Beth Cook. Mary Beth mentioned it to the owners of Running Hair a week later, who called the engineers to ask. That's not notice. That's like a kid's game of telephone. It's, um, the reality is there is no written notice, even to this day, from the Department of Health, that Running Hair needs to put in restrooms. There's no timeline. The basis for the stop work order is a lack of timeline. There's no timeline. There's no deadline. There's no deadline extension because there is no timeline. There's no notification to the owners of any deadline extension. There's no guidance on complying with the rule. To this day, they do not know what COMAR rule or county ordinance they're trying to follow with this requirement to put in restrooms. They're simply trying to get open again. They're held hostage by the closer, closure and they're doing anything they can. This business is suffering significant damage to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars with the closure because the State Health Department has given our county inaccurate information, misleading information. So yes, I'm here today asking you to defy the Health Department and lift the stop work order because the State Health Department has backed you into the corner. The county issued that stop work order in good faith, but based on bad information. Any damages suffered to this point is on them for giving bad information, but you know the facts. Every day they stay closed, every dollar they lose from this part forward is on you, on the taxpayers with our limited funds. So you have a choice. Do nothing, open the county to liability. And I don't know that this Sally told Johnny they need restrooms business is gonna hold up in any civil, to any civil litigation. Or defy the state and lift the order. It doesn't hurt anything. They're gonna be mad at you. They lied to you. Big deal. You're the executives of this county. We're asking you to represent our interests to reduce our liability.
Would please.
You can't blame Running Hair anymore because you know those claims are not true. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with last four digits, eight, seven, three, zero. If you wish to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Catherine Creto, Owens, Maryland. I'm speaking as an individual. Um, I'm following up on Bob's comments. When my late husband and I moved to Calver County in nineteen eighty-six, whenever a significant planning and zoning change was being proposed, we would receive a document in the mail detailing proposed changes. Later, we would receive a postcard announcing one or more public meetings where citizens could ask questions and make and submit comments. The window for public comment closed at some point following the meetings. I'm not a zoning expert, but I've heard that current proposed changes to zoning in the Prince Frederick area would allow for the possible number of dwellings to increase from the current limit of less than two hundred to a possible total of over five thousand. I've also heard that each new residence costs the county two thousand dollars more per year to support than the residence adds to our revenue. But I don't know enough to make an informed comment unless I've attended a good public meeting. Most of our families are working and raising kids. They are busy and they are not zoning experts. How can any average resident comment on such a complex issue which could significantly impact them before they have the opportunity to attend or view a public meeting? The current process for the zoning updates is not transparent. I know that the current board members are committed to transparency and to limiting growth. Planning and zoning has a written policy for public engagement, which they are not following. I urge the commissioners to restart the review process by requiring planning and zoning to engage residents according to their public engagement policy. Let's pause this process now before we go any further, start over again and do it right. Thank you very much.
And Mr. President, that is the last speaker.
Thank you. So that brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Cox?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, please keep in your prayers the family of, uh, the Ricky Buckmaster and also the family of Steve Sullivan, um, both passed away this past week. Uh, attended a fundraiser for the American Cancer Society, uh, on my. On Memorial Day, I attended the service here at the courthouse while attended and very nice. And on Sunday, we honored my mother with her birthday, eighty-four years young.
Good for her. Thank you. Commissioner Ireland.
On May twenty-fifth, I attended the dedication of the fallen heroes Memorial Bridge. Gerald Donovan, prior Mayor Chesapeake Beach family was there, spoke in appreciation of dedication of the bridge. Memorial Day ceremony at courthouse, it was all so here, it was, like I said, very well attended. And I'll tell you, they had the leaders of the ROTC units from each school. And they also had Civil Air Patrol, I believe it was. And those young people spoke. It was phenomenal to hear them. It really was. They did an outstanding job getting their, what Memorial Day meant to them, message out there. On the thirty-first, as Commissioner Hans mentioned earlier, we did the dedication of Sheriff Losby. The roadway area between Cove Point and basically Chesapeake Hills Country or Golf Course was dedicated, and it was neat to see some of the older deputies there, who I guess had the opportunity to work with Sheriff Losby. Eddie Bowen helped spearhead it. Carter Gray had a lot of memorabilia from Sheriff Losby. That was neat to see. And on Sunday was Children's Day on the farm. They had four thousand one hundred and ninety attendees at Patterson Park for that. It was very, very well attended. Antique tractors, food vendors, children's activities, fire rescue EMS, and sheriff's officers were there to represent. Like I said, it's just a beautiful day for it. You couldn't ask for a prettier day for it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Grasso.
On May twenty-fifth, I also attended the bridge dedication to fallen heroes in Chesapeake Beach. And on the twenty-seventh, I attended a house burning. And this was for training purposes for our firefighters in Calver County. Hollywood in St. Mary's County was there, as well as St. Leonard, who spearheaded it, Dunkirk. And I can't quite remember the fourth one. The twenty-ninth, I attended Memorial Day services at Chesapeake Beach. On the thirty-first, I was at Huntington High School handing out awards at their awards ceremony. And this past Saturday, I attended a remembrance in Chesapeake Beach for Lolita Barlow. She started the North Beach Garden Club. And I'm telling you, she is, she's an accomplished, or she was, an accomplished poet. And I heard some of her poetry, met her daughters. And we have so many talented people in Calver County. And being a county commissioner has afforded all of us the opportunity to meet such great people and to learn about people who came before us. Also, on Sunday, Delegate Fisher had a barbecue. It was a fundraiser. And monies will go to help with the election of BOE candidates. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Oh, can I just interrupt? And Todd did the food. I'm sorry. Commissioner Ireland did the food, and it was fabulous.
Is that a commercial?
He does a great job.
Is that legal, Mr. County Attorney?
His turkey is to die for. It is just fabulous.
What do we have for lunch today?
Commissioner Ireland, what do we have for lunch?
Commissioner Hart.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. As Commissioner Ireland spoke, there was the road dedication for Sheriff Losby. I want to thank staff. They put that together super, super fast. Government's not always the fastest, but staff got that put together. I want to thank Director Willis. He was very instrumental getting that going and everybody in the right places. And if, and the family, grew up with a lot of them. It was really neat to be a part of that. A lot of Patuxent High went to the playoff game to get us to the championship. It was a come-from-behind solo shot that got us into the championship for two years in a row. But we fell short, three to one. It was a phenomenal team they played against. PAX traveled great, as always. There's always a lot more of us than the opposing team. It's just really something, out of a small community, to travel that well. And the guys are great. I mean, they, even in defeat, they're just, they play so hard. It's not a cliche. They really do. They play so hard to the end. They're so supportive of each other. Just a great, great program. And then I have Patuxent Senior Awards. And I'm always amazed how well these kids do, where they're going, the scholarships. I mean, they're just, and it's, it's, it's the whole school. I mean, it's not just people that excel in just academics. You see, they're also doing, a lot of people, they're from, had done plays and things in the arts and also student athletes. It was just, it's just, the whole school. I mean, it's just, it's just so involved with all that. And so it was good. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Good.
I want to add one thing. Sheriff Losby's granddaughter, what was her name? Jennifer. She spearheaded the dedication. She did a good job getting that ball rolling.
She did. When she walked in, I had no idea how to do that, and I called Mark and them. And then she jumped on it. She's just a ball of energy. She was, she was great. And, you know, of course, I grew up with Steve and Kim and all of her relatives and, you know, and all them. And so that was really neat to be part of that.
It was. That's all. Sorry.
Y'all done?
I am.
I have one more thing. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I attended a surprise ninetieth birthday party for Connie Deoman. She's lived in the county forever. So happy birthday to Connie.
All right. So we haven't met for two weeks, so it's been a little while. On Veterans, the Saturday of Veterans Weekend, I went to Chesapeake Beach for a service and listened to Dr. Brandon Temple speak. If you ever get the opportunity to listen to Brandon speak, please take advantage of it. He does a wonderful job talking about our military and the service that they provide. In the courthouse, unfortunately, we had to move inside, which diminishes the significance of the ceremony because you can't have some of the things they do outside. But it was well attended and went off without a hitch. The day that the commissioners were at the beach dedicating the bridge, I was in Acakeek. The Southern Maryland's been dedicated as a national heritage area, which means the national government recognizes the significance of Southern Maryland and will provide grants and lots of funding opportunities that come along with that designation through tourism. I too went to the concert at the Marine Museum. As everyone knows, here lately, the weather's been wonderful, temperature-wise. Not so wonderful as a farmer for rainfall. Please pray for rain. But the concert, the weather was outstanding. It was a great concert, very well attended, and they did a great job, as always. So I want to congratulate the Marine Museum, and they've got another one coming up very near future, and then one every month until fall, just to put a plug out for them. Went to attended Children's Day. They're not saying it's the biggest crowd they ever had, but it certainly did look like it. For not being at a school, it's one of the events in Calver County where you won't, you won't see more little children having so much fun. It's pretty much a free event, other than food. And they have a bunch of antique tractors there, and those kids had a blast all day long, climbing on those tractors. And it was very well attended as well. I want to congratulate the Calver Girl softball team at Calver High School. They fell a little short in the championship game. It was a repeat of the prior year where they were victorious and won the state championship. But this year, a game went into overtime, and they lost one to nothing. But the season, I think they ended up twenty-three and one. So they had a great season, just unfortunately didn't come through at the end. But they all need to be congratulated. And graduations start tomorrow. We want to congratulate all of our graduates and all their parents, Commissioner Ireland, on, it's quite an accomplishment when to see your children graduate from high school. So we want to congratulate all those graduates. And be careful, they'll be out running around this week and having a little bit of fun. So, and I do want to address, in public comment, several people talked about the process for the zoning ordinances. Staff, we had a discussion this morning, staff is going to reset that process. And there will be more public involvement before we ask for comments as we move forward. So we try to listen. So with that, I believe all I need is a motion. Commissioner Hart.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move to recess to executive session pursuant to general provisions, Article Section three dash three oh five B fifteen, to discuss a matter of cybersecurity because public discussion would constitute a risk to security assessments or developments relating to information, resources, technology.
Second.
So just like my other commissioners, I'm going to have a discussion irrelevant to the motion. But I want to remind everybody, today is the seventy-ninth anniversary of the D-Day invasion. Please take a moment to think about the commitment and the lives that were lost that day that shaped this world as we see it today. And it's the seventy-ninth anniversary. So it was quite an event, and please take a moment to remember those that gave their lives that day so we all can live the way we do today. Any other discussion on the motion? Irrelevant. Irrelevant. Hearing none. All those may say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Everyone have a great day.
Thank you.